Okay. Good evening. It is 7:02 PM on Monday, February 11th, 2019. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom and I am calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. I don't have my gavely thingy today, so... Yeah. So, if the clerk could please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Kaufman?
Here.
Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I'm here.
Mr. Mosher is joining us by telephone as he recovers. Are you by yourself, Mr. Mosher?
I certainly am.
Thank you. Ms. Van Twyver?
Present.
Mr. Guarino is here. Ms. Hohensie?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Ms. Porter?
Here.
Other attendees, we have Dr. Mosley. We have Dr. McKinney. Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Mr. Donovan. Ms. O'Gara.
Here.
And we don't have our student representatives with us tonight.
They will be coming in.
They will be coming in, okay. Here they are now. Good timing. Mr. Ead is present and Ms. Scales is present also. Thank you. All set. We have a quorum.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see, could you please read the prayer, Mr. Guarino? And Ms. Van Twyver, would you lead us in the pledge this evening, please?
Sure.
Please stand. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Alright, so tonight we have a couple of presentations and I am very excited for the first one. We have the Girls in STEAM here to talk to us about the drone program. Ms. Bestoni, did you want to get started?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So, really quickly, I just wanted to give a little background for those of you who aren't aware of how this program got started. About this time last year, I was in this room and Dr. Murataki was here and he was so excited about creating a drone program and I just really wanted to thank him and the board members that were there at that time. We had the spark of an idea. I wrote a grant, we were awarded $10,000. It allowed us to purchase some drones and we've now run the Girls in STEAM program. You'll be hearing from the girls in just a minute. And next year, in the course offerings, we have a drone course that is offered to all students in Nashua. What's exciting about that is I believe we are, if not the only, one of the very few high schools in New Hampshire offering credits during the day in drones. So, I think the board should be very proud of themselves and the city should also be really excited about this opportunity. So now I'm going to turn it over to the drone instructor.
Thank you again. So, my name is Erin Noteg. I am the Girls in STEAM currently instructor and then next year it will be Drones and Technology. Throughout this process, I myself have had to go through some training which I have greatly appreciated. So, I had to receive my FAA 107, which means I am a drone pilot, a certified drone pilot. Then, from there, I have taken many classes for drone photography and different DJI trainings like mapping and construction work and many other different offerings that you can do with drones through DJI. Then, I'm also now getting FEMA certified through the city, which has been awesome to be able to, you know, talk to the kids and allow them to do like first responding. And then, Justin will talk to you more about that on the next slide. And then, since then, it's kind of, pardon the pun, kind of taken off. Amanda and I have worked with different CTE articles and magazines and they've kind of looked at what the girls have been doing and we've kind of been talking about that to share the program. We, with that being said, I then started a blog about, you know, what we have done through the school and what the girls have done and then that got interest and now I've actually had to answer some questions on podcasts about curriculum and everything as well.
Yay, good job Erin. Okay. Justin, come on in. Thank you, Ms. Noteg.
Thank you. Good af- uh, not good afternoon, good evening. It's been a long day. My name is Justin Cates. I'm the Director of Emergency Management for the city. My role in this has been really to be a supporter. I actually saw an article in The Telegraph that talked about the new program that was being established here in the, at the school district. And I was really impressed because at the city, we also were looking at establishing a drone program or we like to call it UAS. Drones are sort of a bad word in public safety. UAS program related to how we would use it for first responders, how we'd use it in emergency situations. So, our role has been to take a lot of the work we've been doing over the past few years in our office to establish some standard operating procedures, to work with our legal department risk management on how we would take this program from Nashua School District and apply it across the rest of the city. And leverage the students who have gone through a significant amount of training and will continue to do so as they move into the next phase of their program. UAS has a tremendous opportunity in a number of different fields, particularly within municipal government. Just within the city, we've looked at ways that we can use this new technology and I think this aligns very closely with some of the city's priorities to try and find ways to get these students into the workforce, particularly in municipal government, right out of school. And I think this is a great start to that program. So, what we'd like to try and do moving forward in our office is provide enhanced training. So, in addition to the FAA 107 training and the other curriculum that's going to be provided by Nashua School District, how can we provide training on public safety, how UAS can be applied in public safety and emergency management, participating in drills and exercises where we can use those UAS platforms to do aerial photography and video of some of the response that the city might take. And then also guest speakers, bringing in people who do this as a profession and help to intrigue those students who might decide to do this as a career moving forward. So, I really appreciate the partnership with the school district and hope to see it expand even further.
Thank you, Justin. Alright, thank you so much. Okay, now our stars. Grace. So, Grace, maybe introduce yourself and tell us why you wanted to take this course? And then your slides.
Alright, so my name is Grace Laito. I'm a junior at North. My interest in taking this class is primarily because...
Closer to your mic, please.
You can come closer to me. So, my interest in taking this class is primarily for fun because I do enjoy remote-controlled toys essentially. And this is a very great chance to extend this. And then it also fit very nicely into my schedule this year.
Yep, go for it.
Okay, thank you. So, the first thing that we learned about in this class was growth mindset, so it's keeping an open mind no matter what's going on in your life. So, if you take, for example, this plant, this plant didn't necessarily have to grow on the wall. It could have waited until it got into a better position on the ground or until it got blown somewhere else, but instead it took the opportunity and it grew on the wall despite the hardship that it was facing. So, this essentially means that you can work to improve yourself only if you think you can. If you don't think that you can, then you certainly cannot. And then you have opportunities to grow yourself throughout your life. So, the second thing that we learned about was women and minorities in STEM. So, both groups are traditionally very much underrepresented, underpaid in STEM fields, especially when compared to traditional workers in those fields. Certain fields like healthcare tend to have higher representation. In the corner is a picture of Dr. Alice Hamilton, who was a physician at the turn of the 19th, or at the turn of the 20th century and she was a woman and a doctor when both were very, very hard to do. She was, she was an inspiration to me because she pioneered the field of occupational hazards. So, she was looking at working, or labor conditions when they weren't very, very bad and she was working to improve those conditions. So, I hope that STEM fields, like healthcare is now, can have higher representations of females and minorities in those fields. Certain other STEM fields, most importantly math and computer science, have very low representation. I'm in, there's one class for me where there's, it's an English class and there's a much greater amount of females in it. And then I compare that to my other class, which is more of like a male-dominated class, not necessarily on purpose, but it's a history class. So, for example, I am one of three girls and there's 15 boys in that class. That might not have been on purpose, but it happened. And there's just something about being with like females that you don't get anywhere else. And some, and drone careers are growing at a very rapid rate, so it's very good to invest in an education at this stage. So, they are growing at double the national average, so there's going to be an increase in those jobs, so it's very good to get yourself a job in that field. Notably, in those fields are various areas of engineering. So, I included mechanical computer and then also analytics and then bioengineering because that's what I'm particularly interested in as a future career. And then drone jobs include agriculture, military and law, enforcement and geological surveying, disaster relief and 3D imaging. So, it is very, very pertinent to have this class available at North and at the Nashua School District. STEM education will be very, very important into the future and it's very important to offer these classes. And I think that Rose might go in next.
Sam's next. Thank you, Grace. So, what Grace was highlighting is, for this pilot, we didn't just focus on drones. We also touched on some of the subjects that Grace shared with us, growth mindset, the role of females and minorities in STEM fields. So, you know, we just talked about a bunch of important issues and then we also flew the drones. So, Sam, introduce yourself. Why'd you take the class?
Hi, my name is Samantha Meredith and I took the class because the idea of just flying drones honestly just seemed really fun and interesting. I knew without the class I probably wouldn't have ability or access to fly a drone like on my own time and especially not like learn how to fly it and learn how to take all the cool pictures that we did. And I also thought that a STEAM class geared towards females in high school was really important because obviously, as I'm about to talk about in like one second, that males dominate the fields over females, so I think it's really cool to like encourage girls to get involved.
This one, okay.
So, one of the first things that we did in the class was we got a bunch of data and we just kind of talked about it, about the lack of females compared to males in STEM careers. So, in general, males and females perform equally as well in standardized tests in mathematics and science. So, essentially, at the high school level, we're performing at an equal basis. And women also make up half of the total US college educated workforce. However, they only make up 29% of the science and engineering workforce. So, if we're performing at an equal basis as males and we're half of the workforce, it's quite not encouraging, it's not very encouraging to see that we only make up about a third or less than a third of STEAM fields. And then I have some data on the slide and the ones that were the most kind of shocking to me was only 11.1% of physicists and astronomers are women, only 17.1% of industrial engineers are women, 10% of electrical or computer hardware engineers are women, and the lowest one of them all is only 7.9% of mechanical engineers are women. When I look at that number and I see only 7.9% of mechanical engineers are women, but we make up half, 50%, the entire workforce, it just makes me sad because that means about 93% of the rest of that workforce is all males. And I think a big problem is, is that women look at that number and they say, "Well, if I became a mechanical engineer, I would only be less than 10% of that, so it'd be weird" or "There's a reason I shouldn't do it because there must be a reason that it's all men." But when you look at those statistics, they should like empower you to want to raise that number. And then we also looked at, because I always knew about like the gaps between males and females and like STEAM careers and just kind of careers in general, but we also found that there's a large lack of diversity in STEAM careers. So, only 15% of black students and 17% of Hispanic students took advanced math and science courses in high school. And I definitely know that speaks true being in AP classes, that there is kind of a gap of diversity in those classes and there's no reason for that. And it might just be kind of the same thing. You see the numbers, you see that maybe there aren't a bunch of students of your race and it can be discouraging, but there's no reason that they shouldn't be involved and there's absolutely no reason that they can't do it. And Hispanics, blacks and American Indians, such Alaska natives, make up a smaller share of the science and engineering workforce, only 11%. And you compare that to their national percent, like that is their population, that's much higher than that 11% of the workforce. And then kind of specifically talking about pay because there's a large disparity kind of in their distribution, however, there's also large pay gaps. So, the average women's unadjusted annual salary has been cited at 78% to that of 82% of an average male salary. And again, there's no reason for that because women are performing at equal levels almost all of the time, so there's really no reason for that. And then going back to race, white and Asian Americans have the highest median incomes and are more concentrated in professional executive and managerial occupations than Basque Hispanics or American Indians. So, I think that the takeaway that I took from this class, which was one of my favorite classes that we did, well, I also really liked the drones, but I liked learning about this because it was just, it was discouraging, but it's also empowering, discouraging to see that this is a big problem like in our society, but encouraging that me being part of this class and wanting to go into a STEAM field myself, that I would be attributing to raising those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam, very much. Alright, Rose, introduce yourself and why you wanted to take the class.
Hi, I'm Rose Lakeland and I wanted to take this class because I've always been really interested in technology and very passionate about it. I think it's something that's very important in every day and is growing more important as time passes. And I want to, I plan on majoring in software engineering when I'm in college. So, when I heard about the opportunities for this course, of course, I wanted to take it. So, one important thing that I took away from the class was teamwork, which I think is a common thing people take away from classes. But it was really interesting to find it here because you'd think of flying drones as a solo job. There's one drone, there's one controller, one person, but that's not how it works. You have someone flying the drone and you have someone keeping an eye on it to make sure that thing goes wrong and you also have someone looking at the camera to see how your pictures are coming out. And there's a lot of learning about working with others, but also learning how to communicate with other people, which is really useful for flying drones, but also just in having a career in general and being able to communicate with others well and understand what your goal is and how to complete that role. Another important thing is a mindset that we learned, like the growth mindset, it's also the knowing the yet mindset, which is basically just because you can't do something now, doesn't mean you'll never be able to do it. So, when you look at a problem and you say, "I can't do this," you want to say, "I can't do this yet." So, at the start of the course, I know that most of us didn't know how to fly a drone and we didn't know much about photography and the techniques there. And instead of saying, "Oh, I can't do this now, I'm never going to be able to learn how to do this," we said, "I can't take a really good photo yet and I don't know how to fly a drone properly yet." And it really helped with easing our way into the course and learning things more fluidly. And a big part of the course was, of course, the photography of it because that's what we were using the drones for. And so here you can see a picture that we took during the course, which is of the back of North. And you can see that on the side there, a bunch of the different rules and techniques which are reflected in the image there. For example, the rule of thirds is basically you can divide your image into nine different sections and you use that to figure out where you place your horizon line and how to line things up and find the focus of the image. Another thing is symmetry, which you can see in the image really well. If you, for example, if you look right in the middle, the left and right reflect each other, you can, you can see the pathways leading up which represent lines and allowing your, following your eye from the bottom of the picture to the top of the picture. And there are also some other techniques there like reflection, which you could again, kind of like symmetry. And, which was a really interesting thing to learn in the course because even though it was focused on drones and learning how to fly drones, you also learned how to take photography, which is something you can apply outside of drones and you can also take drones and apply that part of the things, agriculture, a lot of things. So, you learned a lot of skills in the course that can be applied to more than just the course and specifically drones or photography, which I thought was really interesting.
Very good. Okay, so the last slide here, I'm actually going to get up and give my chair. So, we want to move just a little bit quickly through this, but these are recommendations the students have for us as we implement the next course and then we'll thank you and we'll be done. So, ladies, a few, just want to move through this quickly. That would be great. Alright. Does anyone want to go first?
Sure. Okay, so I think after we did our final projects, we gave like a little bit of feedback and something that was on everybody's feedback was just more flight time. Obviously, we did a quarter class, so there just wasn't purely room for more flight time, but since flying the drones were all of our favorite part, just getting more time to get to be with the drones and learn how to fly them and kind of do the cool things, like spin them around and stuff. So, just more flight time in general.
One of the other things too was, we had three rather expensive drones to work with and they're rather large for what you can get for a drone, so it would be nice if we had smaller, more like easier drones to work with before going on to like the bigger, more complicated drones.
You have it? Okay.
Yeah. So, another thing I think would be interesting to add to the course, we'll be able to use the course to help other aspects of the school. So, for example, taking pictures from that sort of angle would be really nice for getting pictures of the sports teams or getting pictures of the school to use in papers and that sort of thing. So, it'd be nice to be able to apply what we learned in the course to help aspects of the school outside of the course, which I think would be interesting.
There was also discussion of using the drones to analyze how fire drills would work. That might come later, but that would be very nice to use, just to be able to use it in like little projects around the school.
And again, because like I just said, like we had like such a short time because it was a quarter class, we didn't get to experiment much with all the drone settings. We got to learn, we got to read this manual and we learned that there were a ton of things that the drone could do and we just didn't get to test them out. It almost felt like as we were starting to get like comfortable with the drones and learning the basics of flying, our time was done. So, just getting to experiment with all the cool things that a drone can do.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you for your continued support for this class. It's been a very fun time.
Thank you so much, Grace, Samantha and Rose. If you have any questions, we can answer those. I'll turn the lights on. Very briefly, I'm just going to go around, so Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you, since I had my hand up first. I had a question a long time ago. I think drones are really dynamite. I think they're interesting and fun. I was a little concerned when Amazon was going to drop my presence on my front door. But I do have a question about anything in the course about invasion of privacy. I can just see the insurance companies using these to check out my roof or some sicko coming and shining it in my house. Was there anything in this course that talked about those sort of things and maybe under the license of a pilot, there must be something.
Definitely will be talked about in the full course, the ethics of drones. I think that's a big reason we had Justin involved, just to make sure we were following all the correct rules, why Erin received her FAA license before we started. But, great point and it will be included. The very short course that these guys did, the drone couldn't fly above a certain distance and it wasn't leaving school grounds, but when we do the actual course, 100% agreement, we will have a piece about ethics.
Oh, I'm glad to know that they weren't allowed to go off the campus because I was concerned you might be flying over my house.
You can see a lot from them.
It's a great presentation.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I'm thrilled to see the young ladies so enthusiastic with this technology and possibly getting a career out of it. I think that's awesome. But I have to say, when we envisioned the drone program, when we wanted a drone program to occur, we had no curriculum in mind, so you really bootstrapped that completely. But I never envisioned it as a girls-only program. So, I need to know for myself that young men and young women will both have advantage of the program. Now, having said that, I can appreciate the young lady's comment about working with women together as a group and men being, in fact, I hate to use the word separate, but I think it's a great idea that we need to offer this course for every student. It cannot just be for women. It has to be for all students. So, you know, I have a feeling you have something to say about that.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. One of the reasons we were awarded the grant is through the New Hampshire Department of Education has what are called non-traditional grants. So, they try to increase participation of non-traditional students in certain courses. So, we were awarded the grant to run this pilot Girls in STEAM. However, the Girls in STEAM was open to male students and the course that we have now, Erin, has one male student in it, two male, two male students are currently in the pilot program. When it becomes a full course, it will be open to all students, 100%. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. It was a great presentation and I just want to tell the girls, I think there'll be more women in these STEAM programs if they have fun. Listening to you tonight, it sounded like you had fun. When you have fun doing something, you don't stop. So, I think you're off to a great start.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to congratulate the students as well as teachers. A great presentation. I know you can't go off campus, but there's a great application. Think about this for the future. One of the applications is traffic analysis. Get your drone over Pheasant Lane Mall and Daniel Webster Highway during Christmas time and you can, you can see where, where you could use it for traffic coordination and where the saturation is, but that's just something for you to think about. But, you know, for the future, if you ever have to do an assignment for the future, if you expand on, if you're looking for different types of applications and things like that, that's a great application, so.
And that's a really good point. When students turn 16, they can get their FAA 107 license and they can actually start generating funds and running a business at the age of 16. So, they really could leave high school with, you know, maybe not a full career, but with a, with a skillset that they could then utilize to make a living. In fact, the head of parks here in Nashua has already told us, once these students have their license, he would like to pay them to photograph all the parks in Nashua. It's something that he needs to have done. And that's another reason we brought Justin because, you know, we're really hopeful that some of these students will stick around and become part of the emergency management team, you know, so that we could call on them if we needed some drone operators in an emergency. Yeah. Thank you. Mr. Mosher, did you have a comment?
I do have something to say about it. I think that they, what they're doing is wonderful. You know, when I was in high school, one of the major things that girls did was go to home ec. They learned how to boil eggs. And, you know, how to make hamburgers and things like that. But what really amazed me is the progress in the sciences and industry that women have accomplished. I recently had been to a meeting at the Elks and we had a guest speaker who was with the Air Force. And this lady was a four-star general and she had flown so many missions and so many different kinds of planes and she was getting ready to retire, but she was retiring as a four-star general. How many women do you think would ever get to be a four-star general in the Air Force? That's amazing. And I have a neighbor who was right next to me, who was a chemical engineer. And she has a very good position and she does very well. I have other ones that have gone in through medical school and one of them is one of the doctors that I attend with my legs. And just the technology that you see with the young women, I don't want to call them girls anymore because they're young women, that have, you know, attained skills in coding and computer science. And just the technology that you see with the young women, I don't want to call them girls anymore because they're young women, that have, you know, attained skills in coding and computer science and mechanical engineering, and like my neighbor was a chemical engineer. I have one that I met that was an electrical engineer in electronics. So I think that, you know, the idea that they, young women, are getting into these fields is very important and is very, what would you say, developmentally wise, that they would be able to get into business, starting something with drones. Drones, they get pilot's license. How many young women, I see one on television, she has flown through all of the states, and she's eighty-some-odd years old. And she does this. She ferries people and everything around her plane. So it just bothers my mind when you see where we've come from, you know, boiling eggs in high school to flying drones and taking pictures, photography. My daughter went to the kids' college when she was in the, in Maine-Dunstable, and she got a certificate in photography. So I mean, that's just fantastic. I, you know, my heart, my heart goes off to these young women and what they're able to accomplish. And, you know, to take away the, the difference between, oh, that's for boys, that's only for girls, you know. That's a lot of baloney. It's all hard-washed. And I remember when I worked in the railroad in, in New York, the commuter railroad, we had the first two female locomotive engineers. One was a housewife and the other, and the second one was a former nun. And that did blow my mind, that we were hiring women to do these different kinds of jobs. Then they got more of the trainmen and brakemen and all. So like I said, you know, my, my heart goes off to these young women and just continue on learning and developing. And it's unlimited what you can do.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Ms. Timmons.
Thank you. I was really impressed with the presentation as usual. I do have two questions. I know the girls had a lot of fun, and one of the things I wanted to know, how much flight time did you really have?
Jimmy's giving me the hand signals that say we need them on. They said about an hour and a half flying inside and an hour and a half flying outside. It's important to remember this was run once a week during E Block. So it was, you know, we had thirty minutes-ish, right? Thirty minutes-ish once a week for a quarter, so only nine weeks basically. And I think we gave them about half, half of that time was dedicated to flying, but you have to start inside and then you move outside. To Mr. Moser's point, I just want to say I think it's really important that we picked a female teacher as well and someone who had no experience with drones. So Ms. Notig was kind enough to say, sure, I'll do it, and she had a great relationship with students, and she could model, hey, I didn't know how to fly these before. This is how I learned. So just to Mr. Moser's point too.
Okay. My last question is, I don't care if you fly over my house, I have nothing to hide, so you could fly all you want. How many women, you spoke about women that was of color, and I want to know how many women of color you have in your class right now?
In the, in the drone program.
In the drone. Did you?
Yeah, we had one girl, one young lady who is an ELL, is an ELL student, right, Erin? We had one ELL student and we had one student of color.
Okay, thank you. That's encouraging.
Ms. Porter, did you have a question? I don't have a question, but I'll make a very quick comment. This is thrilling. I don't use that word, thrilling. And I think this is what we want for all of our students in Nashua, is to be excited about learning, to find something that sparks their interest and gives them a direction going forward. So congratulations, you make, you make teachers feel very proud.
I just want to say one other thing too. Mr. McQuilkin is sitting here, the director from South, and although I've done a lot of talking about the drones, I think it couldn't be done without the partnership between North and South, and next year we will be, it will be open to South students as well, with the hope that maybe we could have a program over there too. So I just want to reiterate that Mike has been extremely supportive of the program.
Well, and that's the part you were talking before, when we will expand it and talk about all the ethics involved and, you know, expand the curriculum.
Thank you. Ms. Sonnen.
I don't have a question, but I want to thank the students. I thought you did an outstanding job presenting to us, and you could see how much you've learned and your, your dedication to this. It obviously was a great learning experience. I want to thank Ms. Notig, because I know, I heard her say she had to go up to Manchester to the airport, and she hadn't studied that hard in years. So thank you for taking this on, and thank you to Ms. Bastoni and Mr. McQuilkin, because I think they have opened up our CTE program to the world. It's just amazing how we've grown, and I look at the police officer up there, and I bet he's thinking of a million ways that they could use drones. So thank you so much. It was an absolutely great presentation. Thank you.
And on a final note, we have had some interest from the state school board for these ladies to present. So we may be going to the state school board, and they'll be presenting there as well as Ms. Notig. So I think it's, it's earning some acclaim for Nashua throughout the state, and that's due to you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Bastoni. That's wonderful. I do hope that you guys had that opportunity. I mean, I just wanted to also thank you, Ms. Notig, and thank you, girls, for coming out tonight. I mean, once again, especially Ms. Notig is donating time to our district to share the really good and hard work that you guys are all doing. So thank you very much.
Amanda, how many students overall? I'm talking.
Sorry, how many students overall in the pilot or in the?
You can, both would be good.
Okay, so in the pilot, we have twenty-one, Erin, twenty-one. And we didn't run it the first quarter. We had hoped to run it all four quarters, but by the time school started, like in selecting students. And then eighteen can be in the class for the semester.
Okay.
And we only have, we're only running it one, one, one session or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Chief, if you could come on down. Ooh, I got the tall chair. That's unfortunate. That's all right. Ms. Timmons.
Madam President, I'd like to make the correction on the agenda. It's Nashua Community Conversation on Race and Justice, NCC RJ as the acronym, not Nashville Police Department Community Conversation. So that's Nashville Community Conversation on Race and Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. I think that's important for us all to note, that this is a partnership between the Nashua Police and other community agencies working together. So hopefully, we got that right. And so I see that we have Deputy Chief Mike Carrigan. Did I pronounce that right? I'm sorry, what is it?
Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
Okay. And Alderwoman and State Rep Linda Gathright. So you guys are here to talk to us about your community conversation on race and justice.
Yes, Madam President, thank you very much. Members of the board, I appreciate you taking the time to listen. To your point, ma'am, I would absolutely welcome those three young women to become police officers. We could use them every day. Again, my name is Michael Carrigan. I'm a deputy chief with the Nashua Police Department. I've been there for 25 years. I'm here tonight to ask you to allow us, as members of Nashua's Community Conversation for Race and Justice, to be allowed to present a community conversation in each of the high schools, both Nashua North and South, sometime in May. And I'm going to explain a little bit about what we'd like to do and where we've come from. About four years ago, members of the Nashville Police Department, led by Chief Andy Lavoy, and members of the community, including Linda Gathright, as well as others here tonight, Gloria Timmons, we were becoming concerned about relationships and what was going on across the country between law enforcement and members of the community, particularly members of color. As a result of some of those concerns and questions, we formed a group, Nashua's Community Conversation on Race and Justice, for the purpose of improving relationships between the police department and members of those, members of that community.
Yeah.
Is that better? Sorry. So as part of that group, what we decided to do, our first major project, was to hold a community conversation in which we had about 200 members of the community and about 25 law enforcement officers, as well as neutral facilitators at Rivea University. That evening, the evening's event, we all basically had one to two police officers at every table, and we had seven or eight members of the community at each table. There was a facilitator at every table, helping to go navigate the questions. The questions were set up in advance. And it was just basically a conversation between just the people and police officers, kind of giving, each other's giving their perspectives, talk about what was going on throughout the country, talk about some of the heated arguments that were going on through the TV, how they felt it related to Nashua, how they felt the relationship they felt with Nashville Police Department, and what we could kind of do to understand each other. From my perspective going into the event, it was important to not only listen to what was being expressed by the citizens, but also for them to hear what the police department's perspectives were. What we found from two, we held three conversations total over the past several years. Two of them were big events, including about 200 people with about 25 officers each. We found with those that it was very interesting that the police officers, and we had police officers at all ranks, from the chief all down to first-year patrolmen, men, women, officers of color, and we had members of the community, many community members of color. We found that as we were asking the questions, we had middle grounds, and we were able to develop relationships where we could express our opinions and what we were doing and why we did some of the things we do, what we saw on car stops at night, why we would stop people. And we got to listen to how they felt they were being treated during those car stops. Are you stopping us because of our color? Are you stopping us because of this? Well, we had a different perspective. At night, we can't see in the car, so we don't make those decisions. And it was just an opportunity to sit and talk together. We had two of those conversations that were very, very large and very fruitful, we thought. It came away with a lot of positive feedback. People felt comfortable. They got to know some of the officers at all levels, and it was a good experience. The third event we did, which was sandwiched in between the two bigger events, was a community conversation immediately following the Dallas shootings. It was a very emotional time. Some officers had been killed. There were members in, there were the communities that were being killed by police officers as well. So it was a very, very tense time. We had a very small community conversation in which we had about 20 people, 25 people, and about five or 10 police officers. And it was just a, in a small classroom, we sat together, we just talked. It got very emotional. Some people said some very personal things and how they were feeling about law enforcement and the relationships that we had with the community. Each of those events was impactful to me, and I think impactful to all the police officers we had, because we were able to understand a little bit about the perspective of how we were being viewed as police officers, not necessarily in Nashua specific, but nationally, locally, everywhere. And it was good for us to hear that and to understand and talk about it, and it was good for us to get out how we were feeling and how we were perceiving what was going on across the country. So as a group, we've met several times. We've tried several different projects. NCC RJ was very important in bringing MBK to Nashua at the mayor's request. So getting back on track now, the next project we decided to do is, we'd like to target junior and senior high school students to engage in a community conversation. What we'd like to do is have one event at each Nashua North and Nashua South, in which we have about 30, 30 to 40 students, about five to 10 police officers at each. And we just want to sit down and have facilitated discussions, five, 10 questions that we can work through and talk about with high school-level students. Let's face it, these kids are coming at a point in their lives where, sorry, guys, we're coming, a point in their lives where they're becoming independent. They're a little bit feeling their oats. They're out there exploring a little bit, maybe questioning authority. So we think it's a perfect time for them, community members, particularly national residents of color, to meet with us and have those conversations. How do you perceive the police department? What questions do you have? Do you feel like you're being targeted? Why? Do you understand from our perspective what that means and what we're working hard to accomplish, why we do the things we do? And just opening those dialogues and, you know, we've had a great relationship with Jamila. We've had these conversations, Jamila Asante. We've had these conversations personally between us about how she feels about certain things, and I think she'll agree that it's been beneficial, and it's allowed us to establish a relationship. We would like to afford that opportunity to both of the high schools to start just to have that conversation, talk and just see how we each feel. And I think it would benefit the community to be able to do that. Linda?
Good evening. I just want to give you our mission statement, because I think that's important as to what we're trying to do in Nashua, to provide a continuous conversation between the community and law enforcement by increasing safety, trust, empathy, building positive communication in the community where everyone will be heard and taken seriously. And that was very important from the very beginning, is that everyone's important. What he has to say is just as important as what I have to say as a community member. We co-chair the NCC RJ together, me representing the, the community and our deputy chief representing the police department. And it was really important, because some of the times that we had those, those conversations, there were also young people there. And so they gave a lot of feedback, you know, from being in the streets, just walking the streets or riding the bus or whatever it might be. But a lot of the questions were answered, and I think they began to build relationships with the police department, just as many community people that came out. One of the things that we liked the most is that, at the time, the chief of police, as well as the deputy chief, as well as all the other officers, had their cards available, I think for the 200-plus people that were there. Everyone left with cards, otherwise trying to get a personal, if you have an issue or you think there's an issue, this is my number, please call me, I want to know. So it really is building that, that trust with Nashville Police Department, which for, for, for most of us that have been here for a very long time, like me, 40 years, it hasn't always been that way. And it's not just for people of color, but it's for everyone, because there were serious issues going on in Nashua. I do see Nashua improving. There's a lot of training going on that's with the police department, so I must say that we are moving in the right direction. But I think that there's a lot more that our children have to say, that they don't get a chance to sit with a police officer, to get to know a police officer. When I was in school, elementary school, police officers came to the schools. Everybody wanted to be a police officer or be on the force or be a fireman. You know, that's not too much the case nowadays. So it seems like the interaction that our children have is not the best, for the most part. So I think it's really important that we're allowed to go in as community, as police department, and just relax and talk to our children and find out where their heads are, what they're thinking about, how they feel about the police department, and actually start beginning to build a relationship with them.
Thank you very much. So it sounds like I'm looking for a motion to invite the Nashua Community Conversation for Race and Justice to give a presentation of a community conversation at both of our high schools. If anyone is looking to make that motion?
Hey, I'm a good, I'm a.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Kaufman?
Thank, I, I'm thrilled that you've come to us and that you, you want to work with our young people, and I fully appreciate everything you're trying to do. So I know how much work it takes to gather people, the facilitators, and the officers have to come in. They have to be paid for their time. There's a lot of volunteer. But my point is 50 students is a drop in the bucket in terms of our enrollment at the high schools, right? Each school has over 1,800 students. And I can appreciate why you're targeting, or, well, I'll just use the word, the older students. But I could make the case, as Ms. Gathright mentioned, it used to be that, you know, the law enforcement visited the elementary schools. So I would think over time, the more exposure, starting with the older kids and working your way down, even the freshmen, I would make the case even maybe, and I mean, it's just a huge effort. So I hope that's on your radar. I realize it's a difficult request to suggest that you go deeper, but certainly have my support to engage. support to engage and follow through on what your mission is.
Mr. Kaufman, I appreciate the comments. Just to touch on that a little bit, for those of you who are probably aware, a couple of things we do, we have three SROs that work the schools. In addition to those officers being in the schools each day, we mandate our sector officers who are in that area to stop in the schools every single day and just take a walk-through. And those include every school in Nashua, the elementary schools, middle schools, and the high schools. So we are getting some exposure into the elementary schools. The second program we're running, as you probably all know as well, is the Mayor Program. This program is run predominantly through Elm Street Middle School right now. Pennachuck is working to get our officers in. We've committed six officers to conduct the trainings. And basically, the Mayor Project brings in two police officers to train the middle school-level students, particularly the eighth grade, I believe. They put the students in a situation where they're the police officers, and the police officers are the kids. And as you can imagine, the police officers have a lot of fun with some of the conversations when they're asked to move along, or they're asked to do certain things. And it's designed to frustrate the kids a little bit, so they get our perspective. But by the same token, the police officers kind of talk to the kids and get a conversation about how are you feeling, what's going on through your mind, when we approach you this way? And I found that the officers that are conducting the training have their eyes opened up a little bit, just the fact that they stop and listen from the kid's perspective. It's not all about, I'm the police officer, you do what I tell you to do because I'm the police officer. They get to listen to the kids, and maybe it impacts how they contact the kids during that next contact. It doesn't have to be aggressive, it doesn't have to be mean. So that's what our goal is in the middle schools. So you're getting it at the elementary, the middle schools, and that's expensive, because we do have to pay some of them to come in. And we now want to target the high school students, specifically because I think they're mature enough to let us know how they're feeling, they've got that independence, they're kind of sowing their oats a little bit, and they want to engage us in conversations. And I think they have a lot of stuff going through their brain at that point, that we can offer perspectives that we bring to the table. And we're committed, we've been committed to this for a number of years, so we're committed with the police officers. We've had many that volunteer their time to do it, others, if we have to put them on overtime, we absolutely will put them on overtime. But they will come, and I think it's a good opportunity to bring it to that third level, where they get the understanding with real police issues that are going on across the country. So we do try to touch upon each level.
I thought I saw Ms. Timmons' hand. No?
No.
No, okay. Ms. Van Twyver?
Officer, when did the Mayor Program start at Elm Street? Or when did you introduce it to the district?
I believe it was introduced two, maybe three years ago. It's been going on for several years now. It started as a pilot program once or twice, and then Elm Street has agreed to run it through all, I believe it's their eighth-grade classes, so they've been doing it pretty consistently.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank you, Deputy Chief, and the police department in Nashua for everything that you do. PAL is also big in Nashua, and a lot of our students are part of that, the Police Athletic League. I think a little visibility goes a long way, and this is positive visibility, so I think it's well worth it, and I want to thank you for putting the time and the effort in, and everyone at the police department for doing that for us.
Thank you for the comments.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes. I have a couple of things. I think that's an excellent idea, and that it, you know, should give everybody, especially the young people coming up, an idea of what it's all about, what, you know, how it works. And of course, the respect that the uniform and genders is another thing. You know, I've had contact now and then with one of the officers for one reason or another, and it always impressed me that they're always such well-mannered and well-dressed, uniforms, everything, like they had been passed muster by the tough sergeant, you know, in the Corps. And I have reference also, because I have a relative who has retired from New York City Police, and he had spent time as a patrol officer, and he worked narcotics, and when he retired, he was a homicide detective. So I know what it's all about. I've listened to his stories and what he's encountered and what he hasn't encountered. And I know you guys have a tough job just being there, but the fact that you make your presence known in the schools, and I think that the kids know more about the police and have their questions answered, that this will be in their minds, and as they grow older, they will realize that you're there to help and protect, and you have a good job to do, and it's sometimes a very difficult job. So, like I said, keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Oh, Ms. Oden?
Thank you. I was just wondering, is this done during the school day, or on a weekend at the police department? Is it a matter of students volunteering to sign up? How do you determine who the 50 students might be?
All very good questions. First of all, we're going to, we would like to work with Dr. Moser's permission, we'd like to work with both of the principals at the high schools to facilitate the best time to do that. We thought initially going in that during the school day would be the best time, because the students were there, and we thought it was worthwhile for them to do that. Given 17- and 18-year-olds, and work schedules, and sports schedules, and different things that happened on the weekend, we were afraid that we wouldn't be able to get the attendance. We would like to host them, one at each of the high schools, kind of bring the conversations to their home turf, and have them here in the buildings, if we could.
And I'm sorry, my second question, how do you determine which students will go? Do they volunteer to sign up, or are they recommended, or, you know, I'm just not clear about, you know, if you have 100, what do you do?
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Moser.
My strong recommendation is to go to a place that Mr. Markku and I see each other a lot, called Market Basket. And what you're going to do is get some snacks and offer free food. And that gets a party going really quick at the high school level. I'm kind of, I'm not joking, I'm just, that's the truth. And, did I just get an amen over there? I mean, you did that, you did that, I remember you came to South, and you just brought cookies, and like, you got 20 kids to show up, so. Does it work? I don't know.
Just to be clear, each of our events so far has had quite a bit of food, so we definitely understand, especially with kids, that's the way to go.
So you'll get all walks of life coming to this event, and you'll get some participation. I think that it might be helpful, you know, I'm thinking, again, I don't speak for Keith and Nate, but I'm sure there's some opportunities, maybe perhaps during E Block. And because of the sheer size of the high school, you might have to do kind of what I call like, maybe a couple of sessions to get some different kids, because sometimes kids use that E Block to get extra help, clubs, and what have you. So perhaps one during that time, and maybe something after school. But I think that certainly advertisement, and we'll certainly work with Stacy Hines to tweet, again, tweeting it out gets the kids going, and they respond well to that social media piece. So, you know, I envision this, and please correct me, that it's more of a variety of demographics you're looking to get, it's to have that conversation with different students.
That's correct. That's ideally what we'd like to do.
Thank you. I just want to thank you both for coming to talk to us about this, and for being willing to take on these tough conversations with community members, with our young people. It's important that we talk about these things. And just to throw out there that I adore the partnership that we have with the Nashua Police Department already, with the school district. I was at Birch Hill on Friday, and I ran into Officer Desmond, who's the SRO for the elementary schools, and I saw Sergeant Powers there doing internet safety training. And I feel like every time I visit a school, I see an officer walking down the hall, giving high fives, or over at New Surles, lining up to greet the kids as they walk in one day. So it's just, it's really remarkable, the amount of community policing and positivity that you guys are bringing to our kids, and I just really appreciate that. So, yeah, if there's no other commentary, we can call. The rule?
Okay. On the motion to invite the National Police Department and the Community Conversation on Race and Justice to present, excuse me, community conversations at both Nashua high Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Abstaining.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Hey, we have nine yeses. Motion carries.
Eight yeses, one abstention.
Oh, I'm sorry, who abstained? You abstained, I thought you said yes, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry. One abstention. Eight yeses, one abstention. Motion still carries.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you for coming out this evening.
Did you bring cards tonight?
Ms. Van Twyver, I believe his information is on the letter in your packet.
Oh, thank you.
Yep. All right. Moving right along, we are on to the consent agenda. Any items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Nope, then I'm looking for, oh, Ms. Hoensie?
I'll make a move to accept the consent agenda as is, which includes the January 16th email, and I'd like to speak to my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Okay. The January 16th email, by administrator, was sent to the board, it was sent to the union leader, it was sent to the Telegraph, so it's public. If there's an issue with it, names can be redacted. But to take it out of that list is a violation, in my opinion, of the right-to-know law, so I encourage my colleagues to include this in our board correspondence and uphold the right to know. I'm concerned, because I felt obstructed during this process. I was, my request, my right-to-know was called unwarranted, frivolous, weaponized, apparent was called vile. And not only that, I had the police at my house last, a week ago, because of a post I put on social media. The content of it, excuse me, I'd like to finish, I'm almost done.
But I'm confused as to what your Facebook post has to do with our correspondence.
It has to do with a series of obstruction.
Okay, but that's, we're discussing correspondence right now, not obstruction. So if we could focus on the consent agenda?
I'm trying to tell you why it's important, you can't obstruct. This is an attempt to intimidate a board member into silence and violate my right of free public speech.
Okay, but again, we're talking about the consent agenda. You've made a motion to include a particular email that wasn't included, but that's nothing to do with Facebook. So can we focus just on that?
Was included, and it fits with the pattern, and that's why, because of this series of obstructions, I'm saying.
Let me be very clear, I'm not going to have you discuss Facebook during the consent agenda. If you would like to address this during your board member comments, you are more than welcome to, but I want to focus on the consent agenda, so that we can move forward with the meeting. Okay? Ms. Van Twyver?
Are we going to have member comments tonight?
It is always my intention to have member comments.
We didn't get them last time, so I'm just checking.
Yeah, I understand. Several people who have complained about that voted to adjourn. Now, on the consent agenda, and items listed under the consent agenda, are there any other comments? Okay. Are we ready to vote on the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Yes.
This motion was to approve the consent agenda as it is, or was it?
As is plus?
Plus something else.
Well, it's included, it was included in the list.
Okay, then yes, as is.
It's already, okay, as is, okay. Okay. All right.
Excuse me, can I ask for a point of order? Clarification, where is it on the list?
It would have been in the email correspondence list from 1/25/19, because last time, we did not vote on that. There was some question at the last meeting about emails that people felt should be included. And it sounds like now they are included, so we can move forward with that.
Okay, and names are redacted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. On the motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hoensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay. There are no items removed from the consent agenda. Are there any board communications outside the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we are now on the public question comment period, limited to items on this agenda. Was there anyone who had signed up to speak regarding items on this agenda? Thank you, Dr. McKinney. I'm staring right at Mr. Markku, and he's not moving, so it sounds like no one. All right, thank you. Moving right along, it's time for the superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. There's just a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Nashua North, South, and the two high schools raised $23,000 to participate in the Penguin Plunge on Saturday, February 2nd, so congratulations to both of the high schools. I also want to say, our HR department, thank you, hired approximately 55 substitute teachers, and five para-professional subs, which gives us a total of 60 new substitute teachers. Now, just to clarify with our substitute teachers, when we get a nice, I would say cadre of substitute teachers, typically what tends to happen is that, you know, our really good ones, and our ones who really want to be here, tend to take long-term substitute positions, and they tend to take full-time positions elsewhere. So it's very, very difficult to find substitute teachers in this economy, so I want to thank Ms. Ogara and her leadership and her team to getting those substitute teachers up there. I know there's been some discussion around that, but I just want you to know that we're trying. Again, I'm going to put my pitch out there, if you are a substitute teacher or would like to be a substitute teacher, please feel free to come and be a part of us. We were recently the recipient of a $25,000 donation, presented on behalf of our local Best Buy store in Intel in 2018. The Nashua Best Buy store competed in the competition called Score With the Intel Core. As part of this competition, electronics retailers from across the country competed and headed to head-to-head. Store sales representatives are asked to expand their knowledge about Intel technology and devices they sell. The long and the short of it, the Best Buy here in Nashua, congratulations to the Best Buy, was the recipient of this competition. But more importantly, and this is where it ties into the schools, is that Mount Pleasant was selected as the local school of choice, and funds will be used to finish installation of some technology there at the Mount Pleasant. And it could range from, I have here, overhead projectors, but I also will certainly give you an opportunity to look at that technology when it's finally installed. So thank you, Best Buy, and congratulations, Mount Pleasant, for being selected for that. There's something that I think is important that the board understands, and this is something that we are struggling, I said, the we, the collective, we, the administrators are struggling with. And there are some mandates coming out of Concord around education. And I'm going to read to you House Bill 1612, was passed into law in June 12th of 2018, and appears as Item 5 on RSA 18966. It requires that each school district develops a minimum standards for the privacy and security of students and employee data. Requires each local education agency to develop a data and privacy governance plan which shall be presented to the school board by the end of this year. Requires a complete inventory of all software applications and policies and procedures for access to data and protection of privacy for students and staff. All districts are now scrambling to determine the steps needed to satisfy this mandate. I want to share with you that this is coming directly from Concord, the Education Department. But these are the types of things where we start to think about our budget, that the intent is good, but also it's our responsibility to make sure that we do they, that we do this. So, um, you'll be hearing this from Rick when he presents his budget, but I also want to make, make you aware that, um, there are some things that we have to, um, consider when we start to think about some things as, as a district. Uh, we don't have a lot of money, and I don't say that, I understand our budget is $113 million, but still, we have to prioritize and just, and decide as a district what is important for us. If we can't, then that, I think, is an opportunity for us to partner with individuals up at Concord, um, to, to address these needs. Um, recently, I know in the paper, I didn't read it, but I was just actually talking to Mike McQuillan, McQualkin, about, uh, we had some of our, um, uh, we had Chinese 16 students that came to us, um, and they visited our schools, it was, um, thank you to all the kids who participated and teachers. It was actually kind of cool, it was out of, something out of a movie, we, uh, we had some ambassadors there, and, um, they were speaking Mandarin, and then they were, I know it happened at the South, all of a sudden, we had some of our, our Nashua Chinese, uh, students or Chinese descent, they actually turned around and all of a sudden started engaging, um, and speaking Mandarin with our, our visitors, which made them even more welcoming. And so our visitors were just astounded that, um, we were, not the size of us, but also just our program, is our, our CTE program, our ability when we, you know, it's all about cultural differences and stuff, but we take all kids in, we don't just take the, you know, the top kids, and we provide a variety of services and opportunities for our students. So, I wanted to, to, to thank everyone involved in that, we shared with them, um, our approach to education, it was a nice opportunity, we'll swing back at some point to talk about some of, um, some future opportunities. I was over at Pettichuck last week, and I had an opportunity, again, Tracy Hatch from the Greater Nashua Chamber of Commerce, um, each year they do this nice program with police officers, community members, fire, just around this leadership program. And I asked myself and Jason Tassini about leadership in the district, one of the things our, our schools are focused on, how we can improve, um, they even asked us about our middle school and the reputation of the middle schools, and, and, um, our, our approach to handling problems in, in our schools. So, it was a great opportunity, this is my second time doing it, uh, it was a nice conversation I had with those individuals, and certainly, uh, again, I, I, Tracy and I, it feels like we go back way back, but that's not true, it's only been two years-ish, um, but it's nice to continue that relationship and, and partnership with various, uh, stakeholders who want to get involved in Nashua, but also want to know what's going on in Nashua to make it better. So, thank you, uh, Tracy, and, and all of the individuals that participated in that program, and please don't be a stranger, come and see us and, and keep asking good questions. Tomorrow, listen, I, I'm, I guess I'll just come out and say it, I'm sorry, but it's not an easy, it is not an easy decision to make when it comes to, uh, school cancellation, delays, and early release. To our credit, I really believe that this district does a phenomenal job when it comes to early release, it's one of those things that just seems to, to work out, uh, well. So, um, you, I, I like to explain my rationale, but I also don't like writing war and peace in the emails, because then it gets lost in translation. So, here's the deal, um, if anyone can predict mother nature, you just let me know, I'd be more than happy to, we'll come up with a line item in the budget to make it easier for me. Um, I feel, and I will always feel, that safety of students are first, and if I know that the kids are home by 1:30-ish and, uh, faculty leave shortly after that, it just makes me sleep and, and, uh, more comfortably that night. I feel terribly responsible for everyone when it comes to these conditions, and I certainly want to make sure that the kids get home safely, but more importantly, I understand that the faculty have their own, uh, family responsibilities and needs, and so anytime that I can make that decision earlier to, for people to plan, and I'm sensitive to parents when they work, um, I also want to make sure that we do that, too. So, um, there is an early release tomorrow, and I, um, the one call went out at 6:15 PM, I don't know if some of you got the reception here, but again, um, just stay fo, uh, keep you, I will keep everyone abreast if there's any changes, uh, on Wednesday, so, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Regarding the monies from Best Buy, thank you, Best Buy, um, will we be needing a motion to accept those monies, is that something that will go to the finance committee and then come back to us?
I would prefer that, just so that goes to the proper channel, if that's okay, Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That was very concise, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Someone has to be.
Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, uh, no one's gonna second-guess you on, uh, closing a school, and nobody wants to. I think you've, you know, you, I think you've been, you're asserting caution, which is probably the best thing, but I do have a question, this I think is probably at least the third time where we've either, either had a late start or an early release, so, and they're usually about two hours each time, so that, I'm thinking we're at least six hours in the hole in terms of instructional time, and then some people who are paid hourly, I, so I'm just curious, is that something we make up at the end of the year, so the hours that are not, in other words, we're not losing days, we're losing hours?
They are up to days.
And that's really what I, thank you, I, no, I just wanted to be sure that that is the case, that we, so, we didn't lose a day, but we're to here, to here, to here, pretty soon, all of a sudden, we have a day. So, are they made up typically at the end of the year, and we, I remember the board had to make adjustments in salaries one year because we weren't, um, because people didn't really have a chance to work all the time that they would have normally worked under the contract period, so, is that, am I right about that, I guess is the question?
The para-educator group in the contract, they can use their personal time for snow days and also early release or delays. They can, they have a couple of choices, they can come in, um, or they can use their time, or they can get, not get paid, but that time is available to them to use during the school year.
What about the teachers, and do we have to make up the instructional time?
The teachers are paid a salary for the year.
But they have to work 180 or 184, whatever those numbers of days are?
They're paid, they're paid a salary for the, the entire year, and they make it up, it's the same amount.
So, it is made up?
They're exempt.
That's really what my question is?
They're exempt employees, they're not hourly employees.
So, let me go back to the original part of my question, do the stu, the instructional time, students are not in the classroom for those number of hours, do we have to make them up to fulfill the state requirement for contact hours? I don't know what else to call it.
No, because we...
So, that's a lost instructional time, then?
Because we go by days in this district and not hours, so if we were to count, remember last year, we had the whole issue where, where we going to add some time or whatever, and switch over to hourly, because our contracts are days, this year, we're just doing days, we're not messing with hours, so when we lose a day, we make it up. If we lose less than a day, that, we can lose two hours without having to make it up.
Thank you.
It is what it is.
Kids suffer.
Yep.
That's wrong.
Okay, Ms. Oden?
Um, yes, I want to thank Dr. Mosley for, uh, giving parents enough time to take care of childcare, because, um, that's, that's important to their safety also, making sure that somebody is there at a particular home or their home to, um, to make sure they get in and they're safe, and doing this allows that, and I, I looked at the, uh, Channel 9 website, we're not the only district that has done this, and I feel badly for parents if, if the weather report gets any worse, uh, we could have school districts in the morning calling this, and parents kind of left high and dry, so I, I certainly think, uh, I think it's a tough decision, but I think it's the right decision, so thank you.
Okay, Ms. Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President, um, it was a good decision. One, we have a lot of walkers, uh, we have to worry about their safety, I have a bunch of grandkids that I want to make sure that they get home, and losing six hours in a matter of how many days, three, is not a lot of instructional time, if you look at the safety, so I'd rather have them alive than dead, and so therefore, you made a great decision, and thank you from my, out of my heart, and from my grandchildren as well, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ho Hensy?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to point out, the, the bill that you said, um, that we're gonna have to look at database, uh, safety for our employees and stuff, that may be tedious, when we had index cards, we didn't have to worry about database breaches, and there have been a lot of them, between our own system and the cloud and all that, so unless we want to go back to index, index cards, I think we're kind of stuck with it, and if we do get a breach, there's not gonna be too many happy employees, so I'm just looking forward to that our data analysts can work with the software providers of the software we use, and make sure that it, it meets the, the statutory requirements, because it's, it's the right thing to do.
I, I'm not gonna respond, because it's all my time, you're right.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosher, did you have a, a comment to the superintendent's comments?
Not, uh, in particular, but, uh, I agreed with him, I think that, um, the way he's been doing it has been working fine.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I don't have kids that go to school anymore, so I don't get any phone calls in the morning.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. All right, so moving on, it is now the student member of the board comment time. Uh, Ms. Ashanti or Mr. Ead, did you have a comment this evening? Mrs. Ashanti, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Scales, I apologize, I'm reading it right on your thing and saying it wrong.
It's okay. Um, I know Mr. Burns has already went over this, but I thought I'd say it as a reminder. Um, beginning on Monday, March 4th through the 19, Nashua Parking Enforcement will begin ticketing cars parked at Nashua North that do not have a parking pass or are parked in visitor or staff parking without an appropriate pass. No warnings will be issued, students that need parking should visit their academy's office to receive their paperwork and process their application as soon as possible. Please inform your child if they need to do so, and for students who may be listening, please do so.
I think many, many people will appreciate you letting them know that in advance. Okay, Mr. Ead?
I have no comment, it's time.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along, Committee on Budget, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we, uh, our, our recent budget, we went over ELL and special ed. Tomorrow's meeting has been rescheduled to Thursday because of the, uh, storm, impending storm. We will, uh, be covering transportation, CTE, plant operations, and we will be having Mayor Donches, um, at, at the beginning of, of the, uh, meeting. So, our, our next meeting will be Thursday, um, here at 6:30 PM at, in this room.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, um, I'm unable to attend that schedule change.
Will we have a quorum for that meeting? Can I see a show of hands, please, of, of who will be there?
Me.
Four, five, six, yeah. Okay, we would you have a quorum? Thank you.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons?
Madam President, I just want to ask the chair, um, was this cleared also by the mayor and the present, the people that's gonna, um, present on, um, Thursday? We have the same presenters, or?
Um, I will double-check with that, I have some time, but I did notify the mayor, Mr. Donovan has.
Well, as far as the presenters, they've been notified, and they'll be there.
Okay, I, I will try to get in touch with the mayor's office.
He just said it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, the Committee on Finance and Operations, Mrs. Oden?
We had our meeting on February 5th. Uh, the first one is to recommend the installation of protective netting on the Stella Stadium scoreboards by, uh, Scoreboard Enterprise Inc. for a total cost of $12,145 to be paid by funds in the Stella Stadium Trust Fund.
Is that, is that a motion?
Motion, hm, I'm sorry.
Second.
Um, I don't know if all of you remember, but the scoreboards were installed, I believe, the beginning of, uh, this year, and, uh, they were a substantial investment, $155,000, and they, the company that installed them did not recommend the netting, but what, uh, the athletic director, Ms. Gingras, has found out that several places that have had similar new scoreboards, uh, have had damage done to them particularly by lacrosse, and students do play lacrosse at, uh, Stella Stadium, so for, for $12,000, it seems like a good investment to protect what we have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Van Twyver, I saw your hand.
Yeah. Sorry. I have a question about the transportation for the netting to get here from south in New Massachusetts, $800 and something? I mean, to me, that sounded rather high for a net, there must be some, uh, other things?
Oh, it's, it's netting, and it's also some steel to hold the netting out away from the board, so it's not just a net thrown over it, it's got supports around it.
Thank you for the clarification. I will say that, um, Ms. Gingras was kind enough to bring us a lacrosse ball, um, which my children have been playing with quite a bit, and I can confirm that it's damaging, so, I am fully in favor of, um, attaching the steel cage and netting, and, you know, if there's any leftover, my house could use it now.
You cannot accept that.
All right, Mr. Guarino, I think we're ready for the roll.
Okay, on the motion, uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, uh, the second recommendation, I move to award the work, uh, first to A&amp;M Roofing of $60,000 for work at Ledgestreet School, uh, the second one is to Viking Roofing for $46,286 for work at Bicentennial School, and the third one is Olympic, Olympic Marketing Group for $31,750, with the contingency for this work not to exceed $7,964, for a total approval of $146,000, $125,000 from capital account, 91.50, I won't read all the numbers, and $21,000 from deferred maintenance.
A second?
Um, the reason we have three different companies is because for the total, that gave us the best price. Uh, I think at one point, we were looking to go with one company, and another bidder came in, and we couldn't, couldn't, uh, say no to the bid, and, uh, we, we saved money, uh, Mr. Smith saved us money.
There's another reason, too.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, for, excuse me, the, uh, the one roof, uh, you know, the two roofs are one material, and the other is a shingle roof, and, uh, costs were different in the work and the price.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Mosher. Any other discussion? Okay, I think we're ready.
Okay, on the motion, um, Ms., uh, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay, moving on, uh, make a motion to replace the large chiller motor at Nashua High School North from train at a cost of $83,907, $80,000 from, uh, capital account, and $3,907 from, uh, another 91 account.
I believe that's the HVAC maintenance account.
Thank you, it is.
Second? Are you ready for the vote?
Yes, if there's no discussion, let's move right along.
Um, on the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
He stepped out.
Oh, sorry.
He stepped out.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay. And the last one, a motion to purchase 150 Chromebooks and 150 Google licenses for Amherst Street Elementary School from Computer Hut of New Hampshire for a total of $30,292.50 to be paid by the Title I grant.
Second?
Second.
No, I had asked for clarification. About three years ago, we spent close to a million dollars of Title I money on Chromebooks. It was nine hundred and some odd thousand dollars. And over the years, we have eliminated several Title I teachers at those schools that work with students who are having difficulty in reading. And sometimes it's reading and math. It all depends what the principal sees as the need. And I am concerned that we are using money to buy technology at the expense of direct instruction to students. So I just would like a little clarification from administration as to how this is affecting having Title I teachers at these schools? And what type of data do we have showing that the Chromebooks are helping our students in reading and math?
I see Mr. Donovan's hand is up. Dr. Mosley, were you going to respond?
Well, I can speak to part of that question. Mrs. Oden did mention this at the Finance and Ops meeting. So I went back and got for the five Title I schools, went back and said, okay, 15 through 19 for that five-year period, how many teachers we've had, how many pairs we've had. And at some of the schools, we've added a coordinator or instructional leader. So I'll share this with you. I didn't get it together until late this afternoon, but I'll share it with you. And you can see that sort of in 15 and 16, there was sort of one position cut from many of the schools that was sort of brought back over the last couple of years. In total, in school year 19, there's more teachers than there were. But you do see grants, sort of a couple of years at a time, you'll see it ebb and flow a little bit as far as personnel. That may have to do with the grant itself. It may have to do with the person that's in charge of the grant. I'm not 100% sure. This is just sort of the facts. And then as far as does it help the students, I'm going to turn that over to Dr. Mosley.
It certainly, you know, we look at technology and certainly we can get more of an explanation for you, Ms. Oden, which I think is a fair question. Not to get too much in the weeds, but certainly, technology is just a tool. It's a tool for kids to access the curriculum. It's not a replacement for instruction, particularly instruction that kids would receive directly from a teacher. You know, certainly, our technology helps our kids that have some fine motor skills. It also helps and assists our kids that are now becoming, moving away from, I would say, the traditional pen and paper to a more digital platform. There's some opportunities in terms of technology when it comes to online books. And online books, in a sense that we buy a subscription for online books, excuse me. And the nice thing about having a computer cart with online books is that those books can be updated according to the site license. And that doesn't necessarily factor into all of our grades, all of our disciplines. But certainly, when we talk about social studies, that's a real plus because social studies and current events change from day to day. But certainly, I feel like it's a little bit more of a superficial answer, but I'd be happy to come back and provide more detail if you shall, please.
Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Hohensy. Oh, was someone else speaking?
That's okay. She can speak.
Thank you. I just want to know, was this 30,000 hardwired into the grant? Did we have any options? Are Chromebooks the only option? I've read a lot of things that too much screen time for young kids is not ideal. So I'm just wondering, is that the only thing we can do with this money?
Please, Mr. Donovan.
The Title I grants with any of these federal grants, you need to get things approved. It's not hardwired, per se. But typically, the grant is used for instructional purposes. Some of it's to improve technology. It's used for a number of different things. But you put the grant, director puts the grant together. It's then approved by the state. Once it's approved by the state, then the purchases are made. So this grant was put together earlier in the school year, and it was approved by the state, and this is one of the items that was in there. So, you know, we share the grants with the board each year. We gave everyone last year's grant. The timing of it from a budget point of view, the grants don't, you don't get the money for the grants until the fall, so you can't approve it. At the same time, you approve the operating budget. It's just a timing thing. But we do, we'll do it again as we move forward with the operating budget. We'll show you what the grants are now. So you can get a sense or a flavor of it.
Got a follow-up question? Yes. And then Ms. Van Twyver.
What I'm wondering is, can the board see these grant applications? So that, I mean, that's the point where we might have a voice. At this point, if you put in for this many Chromebooks, we got it approved, we have to accept the money for the Chromebooks. I'm just wondering if that wouldn't be advantageous to bring it to the board when you're making the application? So that maybe there are options at that point that we, as a board, could consider?
Possible.
Yes, Ms. Van Twyver. And then Mr. Ead.
When I was listening to Mrs. Oden's remarks, I got the impression she was questioning whether we should be going after money for technology or more money for teachers, Title I teachers. That's what I, the impression I got. And I think that she's right. We should be going after teachers, not more equipment. I really do think so.
Mr. Ead?
I know I can definitely speak to how much of a help Chromebooks have been to a lot of the classrooms. I think they're definitely a good tool for engaging students with things like activities or even games that can make the curriculum more engaging. The only thing that could help maximize the utility of these is just the Wi-Fi in certain places of part of the, like, the internet in part of the schools is not so great. So we can't always use Chromebooks perfectly, but they're definitely a good tool.
Thank you, Mr. Ead. Ms. Oden, I'm sorry. I think I cut you off earlier.
No, that's okay. I'm not questioning Chromebooks. I know that kids use them a lot, but we're talking about Title I schools where we have students that are having extremely difficult times learning to read. And from the numbers, and I had been watching the numbers at some, but from, some of the numbers I've gotten, Led Street has gone from seven Title I teachers to five. Dr. Crisp has gone from four to three. Amherst is steady at four. Mount Pleasant went from four teachers down to three. And Fairgrounds restructured and went from seven part-time intervention teachers down to three and later down to one. And I think from 2013 to 2018, the total numbers went from 26 to 16. And I believe this year, they're at 19 from what I have gathered. So I am concerned because direct instruction for those students that are struggling in either reading or math, and particularly, reading, I have concerns because, and maybe this is my prejudice from my background, when students are struggling, yes, it's nice to have some technology to reinforce things, but to sit and work with a child who's struggling, you can't be a teacher that knows what they're doing. So I, you know, I just want to raise this because, as I said, I remember three years ago, I believe it was, we spent close to a million dollars on Chromebooks that had accumulated from Title I. And here we are cutting, we've cut a lot of Title I teachers, and I am concerned.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Dr. McKinney, and then you, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could just suggest that we find a middle ground and invite the title principals and the Title I director to a curriculum evaluation meeting to speak to the initiatives that are going on there. I understand the concerns around Chromebooks, but you're looking at a large grant. And if you look at the larger picture, it's not just technology. They are paying for teachers. They are paying for professional development. They are paying for teachers to work additional hours after school and attend faculty meetings. So there are a number of things in there. It's not just the technology. This request is for funds at Amherst Street. And I think Dr. Scarpatty has shown over time to be prudent in the decisions she makes for her kids and her school, as well as all the title principals. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Mr. Kaufman first, and then back to you, Ms. Van Twyver.
Mr. Ead, just to let you know, last year's budget, we spent over $100,000 just on endpoints throughout the school district to improve your Wi-Fi. So you may want to ask Mr. Farronkoff, when he's here, what the scoop is. Or let him know where you have dead spots. He's the director of IT. Okay? We try to address that, is what I want to say.
That'd be Thursday night at 6:30 here.
Yes. Sweetheart night, don't take your girlfriend out. Come here. Is it my turn? Sorry. Yes, please. Mr. Donovan, would you please tell me that the money that we spent a couple of years ago, was it $100,000 on Chromebooks? Was that dispersed over how many schools?
That was five, five Title I schools. It wasn't just Chromebooks. It was a bunch of iPads, which cost a lot more than a Chromebook does. So you didn't get as many. You know, I don't recall exactly what we bought. We bought a lot of technology, but it wasn't all Chromebooks.
Were the Chromebooks distributed amongst all five? Or did, why does, then why does, well?
Well, they didn't buy enough for every student. They don't, you'd have to, we'd have to ask Mr. Farronkoff. I don't know how many Chromebooks are at each one of the schools off the top of my head. But we do not, at this point, have a one-to-one ratio at any of the schools.
One-to-one being one for each student?
One Chromebook per student. We don't have that at any school.
Yeah, well, we never have. But it's been.
Oh, I know.
But it's been, well, okay. You guys figure it out.
I have two things. One, I think we do at Burt Hill because of the generous donation.
You're right. You're right, because of donation.
And, hold on. I lost it. Oh. The other question I had was on the consequences of our vote tonight. So were we to vote yes, then as a majority, then these Chromebooks would be purchased, life would go on. If the board votes no on this proposal, what happens? Do we just not get that $30,000?
You would, yes, well.
Like, does it just go away?
No. But potentially, it could go away? Or potentially, then you're telling the director and the principal, you can't have those. Go tell me, use them for something else. And you're not going to, you're not going to get a teacher for $30,000. You're going to spend the money this year. You know, the thing about the teachers and things, you have to spend that money during the year. Okay? So if you get some funds later in the year, you can't, you can't spend it on a teacher now. We're going to start looking for a teacher, get a teacher, and have the teacher for three months. You're not going to spend that much money because of, and then if the teacher is hired by a grant, and then the grant says, oh, we're giving you less money, then you have to lay the teacher off. So it's a mixture. It's not as simple as I think we're making it out to be here. And I think what Dr. McKinney said is a good idea. Have the Title I director come with some of the Title I principals. They can talk about the process. This is a process. It takes time and it takes a coordination of efforts.
It seems to me like this is a wider budget discussion, too, about staffing. So, Ms. O'Gara?
So we have 22 Title I teachers in the school district. Six are at Amherst Street, three at Dr. Crisp, one at Fairgrounds, five at Mount Pleasant, oh, five at Led Street, sorry, and three at Mount Pleasant. And then there's three at the Title I Nursery. So Amherst Street has six teachers there.
Nursery, you mean preschool?
Yes, the preschool.
Sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino. I missed you out of the corner of my eye.
That's quite all right. Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I think it's a good idea to hear from the director. I think it's a good idea to hear in the curriculum committee because we might, you know, we have to look at what our administration is doing, what the teachers are doing. They're making a long-range plan. And this might be part of their long-range plan, and we might have just, if we go in there and try to tweak it here or there, we just might mess up their plan. So for them to come here, I think it's a good idea for them to come here and explain to us, you know, what they're doing long-term so that we can get the whole picture. Because we don't really have the whole picture as to what's, you know, what's going on there. So.
Dr. Mosley, and then Ms. Oden, and then I'd like to wrap up the discussion and move on.
I guess my reaction would be, in the future, we'd have no problems having the principals here, the teachers, whoever you'd like. The only thing that's a little bit of a challenge, and it's fine, whatever the board decides to do, is that then we have to wait for the next cycle, for the next board meeting to get this approved or not. And so, and so if we had known that this was going to be like this, it would, we would have been more than happy to have those individuals here to address those questions. So if this, in the future, just let us know if you need that additional information. I just, what I'm hearing is that it came up during Finance and Operations, and that was not addressed, then by all means, we'd be happy to have those individuals here. That'd be fine with me.
Thank you. Ms. Oden, and then I'd like to move to.
Okay. I am going to support this because I know that those Chromebooks will not be put into a closet. I know that they will be used. And I understand the importance of technology for today's students. But I do want us to be very conscious of the importance of direct instruction to struggling students. Thank you.
Okay.
Are you ready for the?
Please go ahead.
Ready for the question? Thank you, Madam President. On the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Do we have anything else this evening from Finance and Operations, Mrs. Oden?
No, not at this point. Oh, I meant to write down, I don't know, this first Tuesday in March next month, what is that, March 5th, 6? I have, March 12th. 12th? Okay. Thank you. That's 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Committee on Policy, anything this evening?
I have nothing to report from Policy Committee meeting. Our next meeting, I believe, is February 19th. That's a Tuesday at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Thank you. Committee on Curriculum, Ms. Porter?
We have not met since the last full board meeting, but our next meeting is coming up on February 18th, and we're meeting at 5:30.
5:30. Okay. Great. Committee on Human Resources, Ms. Timmons?
Yes. I'd like to move to suspend the rules if the HR committee met earlier today.
I'll second that.
On the motion to suspend the rules, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mosher?
Yep.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yeah.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Okay.
Also, I'm going to pass around the revised personal recommendation. Can you pass this, please?
Oh, thank you for writing added items at the end. I was just going to compare them. Now I can see it quickly.
Okay, great. I was gonna say that.
Oh, sorry. I was so excited.
On the added items, if you look at item number 16, the 15 is the same, but in the added items, there's a change of status. And instead of leave of absence, she went to LA.
Okay.
So any questions regarding personal recommendation?
I'm sorry, did you make a motion to accept the personnel recommendations?
I made a motion to accept it, but I wanted, any questions on the added items? If there's no questions on the added items, I'd like to move to approve the personnel recommendation.
Second?
Who said second?
I did.
Okay, thank you. On the motion to approve the revised personnel recommendations of 21119, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Ho Hensy?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
In light of us, we may not have a meeting on the, we were scheduled to have a HR meeting on the 25th of February. However, since that, the Board of Education meeting is being canceled that day, may be canceled that day, I'm gonna move that HR Committee out until March.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we'll look to the calendar to see when it is scheduled in March. Okay. Any liaison reports?
Oh, right here.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, our next liaison meeting is February the 20th, at the District Office, at 2:30.
Okay, and that is for the student members of the Board?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and Ms. Oden?
The Health and Wellness Committee met on January 15th. They are working on possibly having a pre- and post-survey to assess the status of wellness initiatives in the district and progress achieved during the school year. They're looking at the local wellness policy, policy JCLF is in need of updates to reflect measurable goals. So they're gonna be working with Ms. Fitzpatrick and the new Food Service Director on that. And they talked about some of the activities that schools are using for healthy lifestyle, walk-a-thons, Bike to School Day, jump rope events, and, I'm sorry, Dr. Monahan, who's on the committee, said that there are several pediatricians that would be ready and willing to show up any of the events that any of these schools have. And the Director of one of our private preschools here, I think it's a private preschool in kindergarten, is designing an outdoor classroom at Mines Falls, and it will be open to the public schools here in Nashua.
Oh, that's lovely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oden.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes, Mr. Kaufman.
Question about the strategic plan. I'm just curious, at the last meeting, there was mention of the survey that was going out in its final preparation. I'm just curious where that's at.
Okay, Ms. Porter, or Dr. Mosley?
The strategic survey is close to about 98% done. It's actually the translation pieces that we're still working on. And so Ms. Miller, our data specialist, was just putting the final touches on that. It's taken a little bit longer than we anticipated because of the translation. So actually, the survey is actually completed. It's just translating it into two different languages. So we were looking to get one more proofread. It's not just one document, but it's a series of making sure that we translate it correctly, and we say what we want to say. So that's why it's just taking a little longer than we have anticipated.
Any idea when you might be ready to go live?
Soon.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, moving along. Unfinished business. Ms. Ho Hensy had requested that we include the student election procedures, and everyone in their packet got some paperwork with the policy, the law, and the application forms, and the speech and campaign information.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that our Board policy and state law are pretty consistent, that we have to have procedures designed by each high school student government for the nominations, the elections, petitioning, and filling vacancies. The one sheet that we have here for the student application form might be a form for nomination, but there's no rules written down, and there's no rules for elections, petitionings, and filling vacancies. So I would hope that there's, I move that this Board recommend to our student members that they would approach their student governments and see if they could come up with some rules, so that our next election, we could be in compliance with RSA 19423F and in compliance with BBBF. Because they're pretty consistent that we have to have them from both schools in order to elect representatives to this Board.
Second. She had a motion in there.
Yes, she did. Can you please repeat your motion, so that we can all get it in its entirety?
I want the Board to recommend to these two wonderful representatives to go back to their student government, student council. The statute says student government, but I know we have student councils, and have them come up with, establish some procedures for the nomination, election of the candidates, for petitioning a student member, to present proposals and opinions to the school board, and procedures for filling any vacancies that may occur. This is supposed to occur, you know, so this whole system works. So we need it for the next election, the petitioning, we may need sooner. Who knows when we need to fill a vacancy? So I would recommend that we speak, somebody speaks to, or the councils might speak to the city clerk, because she might be an excellent one to come and give a little talk on what they do in the various wards, where electioneering is allowed, where electioneering is not allowed, who's allowed to vote, who's not allowed to vote. Those things should be written down, so that we have a clear understanding of what the election should and shouldn't be.
Okay.
Can I try a motion?
Yeah, so I'm still, I didn't get a nice, like, sentence or two. That was the motion.
Can I try? Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Move to empower our student representatives to work with their student councils, to ensure that our student elections are compliant with RSA 194:23-F and RSA 189:1C and Board Policy BBBF.
Thank you, that was very concise. You could let Mr. Guarino write that down. That would be great.
No, I didn't write it down.
Oh, you didn't write it down? Okay.
I was reading the RSA as the rest of it came out of my head.
You did a great job. I've got it.
Oh, well, thank you. Maybe Jackie can bail us out.
Jackie isn't important right now. These people need to understand what the motion is.
Okay.
You have to write it down.
So I saw Mr. Ead have his hand up. Did someone else have their hand up as well?
Do we need to second my motion, or...
Oh, I'll second it, okay.
Okay.
I want to speak to the motion.
Okay, I would like to let Mr. Ead, because he was, like, waving his hand, and I'd like to be...
So I can actually speak to that? At the last Senate meeting, we brought it up, and it's definitely gonna be something that we're gonna work on, and it should be, we should be done by, like, in a couple, at least a couple of months. By the end of this year, it should be solid. We should have a written, perfectly written, and we're gonna have rules regarding the election and petitioning and filling vacancies, and we're gonna try to work in accordance with the North, with North School, so it's, so it's the same between both schools, and I'm sure...
They don't have to be the same?
Well, we thought it would be, that would be nice, yeah. You know, straightforward.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Ead. I appreciate you taking that, the mantle of that responsibility on yourself, and taking the initiative to go talk to your student senate about it. Ms. Scales?
I haven't, I haven't done that, but I haven't spoken to my student council or government, but I think it's a really good idea for my school, and I'll definitely take an initiative on it.
Thank you. And then Ms. Van Twyver?
Thank you. It's a good exercise for the students, it really is, introducing them to the laws and things, you know? Who is the advisor, who are the advisors to this? And are they the ones that developed this paper, Board of Education Student Representative Speech and Campaign Information?
I don't know. Ms. Timmons?
Who wrote this? Did the students write this, or do we...
It's part...
Go ahead.
Who authored it, I'm not quite sure, but it is one of the things, I don't, which one you're looking at, I believe that's the South?
Last page of the handout we got is...
Yeah.
Yep.
So it is part of their, kind of their governance system in terms of their election of student board members.
Well, I don't understand why the speech has to be approved by the student activities.
Because you can't, part of this has to do with the making sure the speech is appropriate, making sure that it doesn't say anything that would offend, or would be inappropriate. And so that's why the advisors review the speeches, to make sure they're appropriate for the audience.
Well, it seems to me that would restrict their freedom of speech. And if there was, if they gave a speech that wasn't suitable, that was, had foul language in it, or, you'd deal with that after the fact. But to assume that they're not going to be doing the right thing at the right time, to me, is, I don't think they need to be approved. And then they can't change their speech after they've given it. What happens if you don't remember correctly your wording that you had, and something else pops up? As a public, if anybody had done that to me when I was running for the Board of Education, I wouldn't have run. And, and...
Don't overthink it.
You can't tell me what I can say and what I can't say, but this is high school, and we have to assume that these students, it's a learning process for them, and I just found that to be very strange, that's all.
Okay, right. Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I'd like to speak on this. One of the things that I read on this Title 15, and also the BBBF on the back, we don't have to do any more than what's on this document right here. That's absurd, to make the kids to go through all that unnecessary process when it's right here and right, and so I don't agree with making the schools do any additional work. This is just perfect. And I will not support that last motion, I'm just telling you that right now. And the children, or the kids, or the students, I would like to say, they should submit their speech to the principals, just to make sure there's clarity, and there's no vulgarity or anything else that's in the document. There's nothing wrong with that. So we're making something simple hard, and we shouldn't do that.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Mr. Kaufman, then Ms. Oden?
And then me.
Thank you.
Okay, and then Mr. Mosher?
My thanks to the students, especially Mr. Ead and the, Ead, I'm sorry, and the folks at South. You've got a head start, is that right? As Ms. Van Twyver suggested, it's a great exercise in civics. If you look at the description of the student board member responsibilities, it speaks to policy. It makes reference to students bringing forward a proposal and working through the process. So I think this is perfect. It's going to clear up your elections going forward. You're gonna have the opportunity to ensure compliance with state law. You'll be making new ground, and it will be very much appreciated by your future students and the Board for all your hard work. And I would try and get it done by the end of June. I wouldn't, when you said next year, that to me, okay, thank you, just to put a time to it. Thank you. And if I can offer any help, feel free to ask.
Yes, Ms. Oden?
Okay, thank you. I'm not gonna support the motion. I think the students have this under control, and it's their election, and I do have a question. I'm looking at the section from the state, Section 2, where it says, "A student board member shall be chosen by a simple majority vote of the high school student body." I'm not sure that's what we do here, and I don't think that's what the state should be saying, because here in Nashua, the student, the whole student body doesn't vote. And isn't it a simple majority of the students that vote, rather than the student body?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if maybe the state, in Section 4 of our policy, BBBF, it starts off following what the state has laid out, but I think the state might need to look at that. We are following what the state says, but I think the state making that statement is tying the hands of Nashua for doing it correctly.
Yes. You know, I have read it and reread it, and I realized that it is a little bit cumbersome for the students, and I actually find no problem with it at all. And I am willing to support it. And I think that we are trying to over, we sit there, you know, nine people sitting around in the center, at the horseshoe, and we're overthinking a lot of the things that are in there, and say, well, what if, what if, what if? And I think we should leave it to the, to the kids and to the administrators to oversee it, and they've been doing a good job up until, up until now. Why start murdering the waters? You know, I don't see any reason for it. So I shouldn't overthink it. So I'm gonna support it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Yes, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll say to Ms. Scales and Mr. Ead, you are owed an apology for those members of the Board who said that this was not an open and transparent election. It was. And to make a big issue out of this is wrong, and, you know, and, excuse me, I have...
That is not germane to this discussion.
Excuse me, I am gonna apologize for them, because they don't know how to apologize and admit when they're wrong.
Mr. Guarino?
But I just wanna say, I, excuse me, I have, excuse me, excuse me, I have the floor.
And I have a right to interrupt.
No, you don't.
Wait, wait, excuse me, both of you, both of you. Everyone got a chance to speak. Mr. Guarino, please be concise.
Okay, I am not gonna, I am not gonna vote...
Not germane.
Excuse me, I am not gonna vote for this motion, but, but, you know, you students are going to go back and work it out, which is what you're supposed to do, you know, amongst yourselves. And I'm sure you'll come up with a good policy and procedures. These policies are probably older, they're probably almost as old as you guys. They're probably like 20 years old, and they were probably developed by students at that time, because we don't even know where they came from. But they've been using them all this time, and the elections have, in the past, been fair, open, and transparent. They were always fair, open, and transparent, and they were with you, you guys. So I just wanted to put that out there.
I'd like to...
You, I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons, you started to say something?
I'd like to call the question. Is that the correct, correct, because we're not gonna get anywhere?
Call the question.
Call the question. I'd like to call the question. And just spoke on...
She can do it. Yeah, she can. She can do it. Yeah, she can do it.
Call the question on the motion. Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Um, Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Um, it carries six to three. So on the motion, this next vote is on the motion.
Can you?
Can I read it?
Uh huh.
The motion is to move that the students go back to the student council.
The word I believe Mr. Kaufman used was to empower the students.
To empower students.
To go back to their student government.
To establish procedures for filling student representative based on the state law.
And board policy.
And board poli, policy. On the motion, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Um, no.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
No.
Motion fails. One, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, they're taken out of, they're taken out of the meeting.
Well, no, I think they stepped out to talk, yeah.
Okay, moving on. The next item, I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino?
Oh, go ahead. I want new business.
We don't empower our students to do a proper.
Mr. Kaufman and Ms. Van Twyver, thank you. New business. Oh, we can't move on to new business. With the first item is student behavior data requested by Mr. Kaufman.
Point of order.
Um, yes, go ahead.
Move to continue the meeting to complete all business.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I wasn't paying attention to the time. I'll second that myself. Am I allowed to second it? I'm gonna.
You can't make the motion, but you can second it. Attention? Oh, well, I thought, I thought not. Okay, right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so the motion that we're talking about is to extend the meeting. Do we need to take a five-minute recess? Okay.
Let's do the vote.
Let's vote to extend it and then do a five-minute recess. Okay? Do we extend a half hour at a time? Yes.
Well, my motion, my motion was to extend and complete all business.
Oh, I'm sorry. To extend and complete all business is the motion.
Clarification. I thought effective January the first, 2019, that we no longer was honored to our delay. Or I thought that we would go and let you decide whether we would extend our.
I don't believe that we changed the policy in any way.
I thought it was to December 31st.
No.
That was the two-minute rule.
Yep, Mr. Kaufman had his hand up and then you.
Okay, that's all I was going to say. The board policy requires continuation at 9:00 PM or after two hours. It was the two-minute rule that expired at the end of December.
Okay, Mr. Guarino.
I'd like to amend the motion to just extend the meeting 30 minutes and not have to finish rest of the business.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we're voting on the amendment, which is to only extend it half an hour.
On the amendment, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
This is good. This is fine.
So now we can vote on extending, extending the meeting 30 minutes.
Okay.
On extending the meeting 30 minutes, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Ms. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries six to three.
Okay. I'm going to ask that we take a five-minute recess. We'll come back here at 9:21 and we'll begin our half hour at that point. Thank you. Okay, it's a little later than we hoped. It's 9:25 and we are now back in session. Oh, thank you. We're on to new business. It looks like Dr. Mosley hasn't made it back yet. So with consensus, I'd like to skip ahead to item two on new business and then we'll go back to the behavior data when Dr. Mosley can speak to it. Mr. Kaufman?
All right, I'll take the board at her word that we will get this done tonight in the event that we timeout, we apparently timeout because we don't know. Are we starting the 30 minutes now?
I would like to start the 30 minutes now.
9:25. Okay, thank you.
Is that acceptable? And I see Mr., excuse me, I see Dr. Mosley has rejoined us, so we can go in order then. You, you don't get a chance to sit down and get comfortable. Okay, so the next item is the student behavior data, which was requested by Mr. Kaufman and provided to us by Dr. Mosley.
So a couple of things. What I have here in the packet is, and it was generated on the third of Novem, of the, excuse me, the third of December. And really, this came as a result of the conversation we were having with the union around discipline, around some certain, I would say perceptions, misperceptions about what was really going on. And so what we asked our principals to do is to pull some data. We started at the secondary level and then we are going to continue to have discussions at the elementary level. And so what you see in this packet here is what I call a snapshot as of December 3rd of 2018 around our data, around discipline. And so rather than, I think what's easier to interpret is just go to one school and then tell that narrative. But as you'll see, as you look at the data, many of the schools share the same amount of numbers. So if I can, board, the BOA, excuse me, can I just go, have everyone just go to student discipline at Nashua High School North? Just, I'll just wait for you to get there. Excuse me.
This is the third page.
Right, so it's the third page, right. It's just, it's, the numbers are plus or minus, but it's all kind of the same. So if you look at Nashua High School North in 2018, 2018, I'll stop by just saying that the amount of students not involved, students who have nothing to do, who have never been in trouble, is about 82% of our students. Okay? And when you start to work up, you look at the students that have had approximately one infraction. What I mean by one infraction, it can range from detention, it can range from half a do, half a day of in-school suspension or some type of infraction who have just had one. That's about 10%. So in terms of numbers, just so the public knows, we have about 100, 1,753 students at the North. Out of those students, 1,437 of them are never involved in any discipline whatsoever. Then we jump up to, to students that have just had one discipline infraction. And that can range from, you know, detention, it can range from in-school suspension, just one time. That's about, about 9.5% or I would say 167 students. Students that have just had just two infractions, you jump up to about 2% or 40 students. So roughly doing the math, I'm just ballparking here, that's 92, that's 92 plus another 2%, that's about, about 94. 94% of the students here at the North have never been involved in any type of, of discipline or have one to two infractions. Okay. Then when you jump up to what we call multiple infractions, where we've had kids that have had three to six infractions, that can range from, from, you know, detention, suspension or whatever, that's about 4.9%. And then when you jump all the way up until the students that have seven to 17 infractions, that's about 23 students. And that's about 1.3%. Now, if we want to follow kind of what I say for, for the board, it's just kind of moved to the right here a little bit. And I just want us to say on that top line, when we talk about the students that have had seven to seven, seven to 17 infractions, which is 23 students, the total number in terms of percentage is about 1.3%. So 1.3% of our students have been involved in, you know, what I call high level of discipline infractions. That's about 211 of them. In terms of the percentage of that discipline with those two tiers, you're looking at 26% for students that have had seven to 17 infractions and students that have had three to six infractions, you're talking about 41%. So just doing the math very, very quickly, seven, six-ish, about 60, 68% of those kids in that top tier, roughly about 100 kids are really counting for the majority of the, what I call infractions in, in the district, in, at the North, excuse me, at the North. Am I speaking too fast?
Yeah.
We got me? Okay. So then when you move over, you start to look at the number of in-school suspensions. And you, and again, what you can see is those same kids, those kids are counting for the majority of those infractions. When you look over at the number of student, number of in-school suspensions, you can see that. You can see the number of out-of-school suspensions. You can see that these particular kids in these top two tiers, again, in the high 60s, I'm, I'm sorry, it's actually 71% if I'm, my, my calculations are correct. So students that have had three to six infractions, seven to 17 infractions, these same kids up here count for over 71% of the suspensions at the North. And what this number really says here, and where I'm going with all of this, is that the, there's only a small number of kids in terms of just at the North, about 100 kids that account for a lot of the, what I call high level discipline. The other thing that we found when we looked at the data is that 67, when you look at this raw number here, so we have 17 students at seven to 17 that account for, that are free, free and reduced lunch. And now when you look at the three to six infractions, it's 67 of those kids. So what's really interesting is that the free and reduced lunch or those kids also count for the high number of infractions when it comes to those, those numbers. And basically what I'm saying to you is that the kids who are involved in our discipline system that have the highest number of infractions are close, those kids are likely, 79% of them, 78% of them are from the three to six infractions and 73% of them, 74% I would say, are probably, count for that demographic. I'm just rounding numbers here. I would say about 75% of our kids that are involved in high level infractions at the North are qualified for free and reduced lunch. Where am I going with this? How does this fit into the big picture? Number one, the numbers, the numbers suggest that there is a small portion of kids who are actually part of the discipline system. What we also looked at is the demographics of the, the students. And when you looked at the demographics of the students, you, you tend to say, okay, how many of these kids are, are of, of Asian descent? How many of, of minority percent? How many of Native American? What is that? What does that number look like? And so when we looked at those numbers, we, we asked students, students identify as Hispanic or Latino receiving discipline. Out of the number of students, we found that 36% of those kids were of Latino descent. And, excuse me, we also found that there are likely to be males as opposed to females. And certainly that these were numbers that we were kind of looking at in terms of how do we make it better. The other piece that I want to bring out is that we look at these kids, and I want to go back up to those kids that have seven to 17 infractions and those kids that had three, three to six infractions, who are they? What are we doing about them? And so what we've done over the last two to three months is that we've really had some discussions around that. And part of that has to do with looking at our Clearway program, looking at our Brentwood program, looking at our process of referral, looking at these kids' pathways to the high school. Some of these kids are not necessarily native to our, our community. In other words, they've moved in from different areas. And so they've had varied experiences prior to their arrival here at the North. We are looking at these kids in terms of what's best for them. Clearly, clearly, suspension, 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 suspension is something that's not working for these kids. I mean, essentially, we would be suspending them almost every single day. So partly what we're trying to do, and I say try because not every single kid has a, has a, not every kid responds to everything the same way. We're having these discussions internally and also with our Clearway program as well. These numbers are certainly concerning because I think any student that is missing school needs to, we need to look at. But at the same time, we're having these discussions around what to do with our most disenfranchised student that, that continues to run through the cycle of, of our discipline system. When we looked at all of the schools, if you just take a big, big step back and you look at all of the schools from a distance, this 82% is about that threshold throughout all of the middle schools. If I can just do a really quick, quick kind of jump through, even when you look at the number of students, I'm sorry, I should just be, I should slow out. Even when you go back to the first page and you look at the student discipline on Elm Street, you'll see that a number of, the percentage of students not involved in any discipline is again at 82.2%. When you look at the Fairgrounds Elementary, Fairgrounds Middle School, you see that 86% of those kids never are involved in the discipline system. You look at Penachuck, 92% of the kids are not necessarily involved in the discipline system. I already did the, the North. And I also did, I'll just briefly jump over to the South and you look at 82% of those kids are not involved in the discipline system. I need to acknowledge that we should, we can do a better job with unifying our reporting of discipline. At the middle school level, we, through our discussions, we found that there was a system of, that was inconsistent throughout all of our middle schools. One middle school was using another, another practice. One middle school was using our, our student management system. And so one of the things we said is that we have to coordinate and make sure that we're using the same system for reporting discipline. And we certainly did that. As I shared earlier, there is a varied amount of discipline that happens at our elementary schools and it's no one's fault, you know, because of the transitions that have taken place in the district, because of the change in leadership. There are very various programs out there that, that are currently existing that are also inconsistent as well because they're not consistent throughout the schools. So this is a brief snapshot of the discipline as we've had these discussions. Certainly, they're ongoing, this, this discipline. I want to be just clear, I, I want to put it out there to the public, I want to put it out there to whoever's listening. There are great things that happen here at our schools. They are. Our schools are the melting pot of, of Nashua, I'm sorry, of New Hampshire and America. We have so many different things going on in our schools. And, you know, there was a question that was asked when I was presenting at the, at the Nashua Chamber of Commerce. They said, is it true that your middle schools are, you know, not really up to par? And I kind of stood back and said, that's a very good question. I'm glad you actually asked that. Our middle schools are, are, are in, well, Elm Street's probably in need of a repair or something, I will admit that. But what we have is that we have some great things happening there. Do we have problems? Absolutely we do. Do we have some things we can work on? Absolutely. But the data shows that 82% of our kids are doing the right thing. And, and certainly we have some kids who are in need. We have some kids who, who do deserve and need some additional attention. There were some behavioral programs that were in place a couple of years back. Those programs were cut or reduced or moved around. We're certainly exploring. We're certainly exploring making sure that if we revitalize or bring those programs back, we do it with fidelity and with time. And I know Dawn has been working with a cohort of middle school teachers around that. We still have not done and can do some work at the elementary school. And certainly, I know that at the high school level, Keith and Nate and their administrative team, along with the guidance counselors, have been working with Clearway and the Brentwood program. But I also think that there's some opportunities for us to do some work around restorative justice and to try to keep as many of our kids engaged in our, in our schools. I've been rambling too much, so I'll stop right there and I can ask, answer questions or continue on.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Mosley. Mrs. Van Twyver, you had your hand up.
I did, thank you. I have a question about the listing of the different nationalities or the demographics or whatever it is. How do you get this information? Because there's one that's black, Native American, Pacific Island, white, and Hispanic. Whenever they sign up for school, is there something that they check all these boxes that apply? Or is that one nomenclature on the form that they check?
That's a very good question. They do, they do, actually. They're multiracial.
So...
Excuse me?
Yes, they check more than one box.
They do check more than one box. Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you, Dr. Mosley, for getting this data to us. I appreciate you addressing the frequency of how many infractions have occurred. I'm curious to learn about the severity. In other words, are they inside, in-school suspensions, out-of-school suspensions? Are there, how many are detentions? How many police referrals? Because I know we've had some instances over the last few months where there have been police referrals. So I would appreciate if you can further break this down to include severity. I want, trying to get a feel for what, you know, how bad is it? Kind of, you know, it's one thing if somebody just acts out in class and, you know, is a substitute teacher, believe me, I've experienced some of that because their intent is to just disrupt. But I'm concerned about bullying, I'm concerned about other things. And so if you could give us some depth to that, I'd appreciate it in a future, you know, review.
Mr. Kaufman, if I can bring your attention, ISS means in-school suspension and OSS means out-of-school suspension.
Why?
You want to know the whys, not how many's?
Exactly.
How many whys?
This gives us the scale and the scope, but it doesn't tell us why.
Oh, I wonder if FERPA would be involved in the whys.
We don't know who they, we don't care who the kids are. We don't know about kids.
We had so many bullies, we had so many fights.
I'm sorry, can you put on your thing?
My thing?
Your thing, your microphone, sorry. It's late and I couldn't come up with a word.
Let me know what kind of a thing. You'd like to know whether so many bullies, whether so many fights, whether so many slap on a teacher, or, you know, whatever. I mean, you'd like to know how severe these things are.
For the nature of the infraction.
Well, thank you for proving my English. Thank you.
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to relate it to our disciplinary, our behavioral codes that we have, the nice policies that you had worked on.
Yeah, well, we can look them up if you'd like.
All right. Mr. Kaufman, you had something to continue.
So consistent in what you were saying, so the Class I's, Class II's, Class III's. So that would help us because we have the, we know, they're defined somewhere.
Okay.
And that's in the student handbook. So we could refer back, okay, we had 22 Class II's and we would know, we know what that classification includes, so that would help answer the question.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Guarino, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Mosley, did you want to respond?
One of the things, when you look at the data and you start to really massage it a little bit, and this is what we found when we spoke to teachers and also with the, with the principals as well, they're the same kid. The same kid is getting in trouble over and over and over again. So the infraction, these infractions, again, I'm just looking at the north here, is that it's a little over 100 kids, but they're, they are racking in the, they're accumulating the most out-of-school suspensions. And so those are the types of things that we, and certainly when you think of the out-of-school suspension pieces and in school, it all depends on the nature of the infraction and the frequency of the infraction. So I can certainly do my best and try to, to work with principals on that, to get you that information at a later date.
Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just going to say that we could probably look at the data and go back and look at what in-school suspension and out-of-school suspension, you know, where it falls in those class, classes, and figure out, you know, what they were for. I would imagine that we're just asking administration to do a lot more work and a lot more data collection, and we're not looking at the impact that it has on man-hours, and we have to be wary about our questioning and our demands on administration and how that affects them doing their job. So, yeah, it would be great to have a lot of data, but it also, data collection can be intensive, labor-intensive, so we should keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Oden, I'm going to go around first.
Thank you. I would like to see the level, like, one of the high schools, seven to 17 infractions, for these Level I's, for these Level I's. I would like to know that, and I would think the way the database works, it would be fairly easy to do that. I also am very interested into seeing how many students, what type of discipline problems we're having with vaping. Isn't there some way they can type in how many discipline issues are on these sheets that have to do with vaping? And I'm concerned about that because I keep hearing what a big problem it is, and as you read more about vaping, the damage it does to students. But I had, I had a parent call me and the child had got caught vaping at a middle school, and they were suspended out of school one day and in-school two days, all for the same thing. Then a teacher from another middle school told me, two students were caught vaping and they missed lunch, and that was it. We need to have consistency across the district here. But I would like a little bit more detail in seeing, are these students that are having multiple infractions, you know, if they're having up to 12 infractions, 15, are they Level I's, are they Level II's, are they Level I's? I think that's valuable to know, how serious the discipline issue is. I would like to see that.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. Mr. Mosher?
Yeah, I was just thinking along the same lines, and I was wondering if there's a number of them that are multiple infractions, perhaps even for the same thing, like what she just said about vaping, how, you know, how many times have they been caught doing that, and so maybe something else that they have done that comes under the heading of a multiple offense.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I'd like to say something and then I'll get around to the second, if that's all right with folks. I'm interested at this correlation between the number of our students who are food insecure and the number who are receiving these multiple disciplinary actions. It's not obviously a direct line, but the numbers are high of the percentage of kids who are food insecure, who are involved in our disciplinary systems.
Yep.
And so I feel like this is an opportunity for us as we look forward in the budget, not just the Meals That Matter program, but is, are there things that we, as a school, can do, or are there things that we as a community can do to help reach some of these kids? Because I feel like we're, we're missing a very small segment of getting them really invested in being here and being here in a positive way. I mean, I just, my heart breaks for these kids, I want to help them. So, was it Mr. Kaufman and then Ms. Van Twyver? No, just Mr. Kaufman.
No, I don't, I don't get them.
Okay, I just want to make the point why understanding severity is important. That could help us determine perhaps what professional development might be needed for some teachers who are constantly engaged in working with a particular problem. They may not be trained to handle a particular issue. If we know that that is necessary, we might be able to get some particular training, or it might just really identify the need to identify, if that makes any sense, the type of intervention that might be required for that particular student. So I think understanding the numbers and understanding why kids are acting out the way they are, I think it's very important. And if students are putting other students in danger, then we need to know that also. Or in fact, putting teachers in danger. I had one teacher contact me, told me they weren't very, they weren't feeling quite safe in their school. So that's one of the reasons why I asked for this information. Thank you.
Thank you, that's heartbreaking as well. Ms. Hohency.
Thank you. I agree that the severity is important. I'm more interested in bullying. You know, is that eradicated? I talked to a grandparent today that was concerned about bullying of a student in the school. So, I mean, I offered, "Talk to me and I'll tell you how to go through the process." They're afraid to speak out. So what percentage of our kids are bullied? I mean, none? That'd be great. But if you can break it out into the categories, we'll at least know what type of things our teachers are dealing with, because this is great for numbers, but it doesn't really help us understand three dimensionally what type of problems they're facing.
Thank you, Ms. Hohency.
Bedlam Chair, our 30 minutes is up, it's 10 minutes to 10. We have students that need to get back home. We need to do something to wrap this up pretty quickly because I feel bad that they're still here at 10 minutes to 10, when they may have other things to do like homework. So I think...
Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
...conscious of that.
And I, I do want to be clear to our student members that there is no obligation to stay. You are welcome. Nobody will think less of you. You have to get up much earlier than, well, than I do. So we want you to make sure that you are putting your own educational needs and your sleep needs first. Okay?
Truly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Ead.
What did he say?
I know, you guys are juniors, so you know more than me at this point, I think. Okay.
Are we going to extend 30 more minutes or what?
Make a motion.
I'm looking for a motion then to extend for 30 more minutes. If no one's willing to make the motion, then I suppose...
Bring my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman.
Motion to extend the meeting to complete the business before the board.
Second. Is this one? Okay. Sorry, that wasn't...
I'd like to, I'd like to amend that to say, extend 30 minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second for Mr. Guarino's amendment? Second. Thank you, Ms. Timmons.
Okay, on the motion to extend 30 minutes, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
No.
Seven, seven to zero, motion fails.
So that was the amendment to, that was on the amendment to extend for only 30 minutes.
So now we're back to...
So now we're back to Mr. Kaufman's motion to extend to complete our items on the agenda.
I understand.
Okay.
You didn't mean...
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't mean to look at you, I'm just looking in that direction. I'll look in this direction. We're now moving to extend to complete the agenda. I was looking at Mr. Kaufman.
I appreciate you doing that. Thank you, because I was putting my stuff in.
I want to make sure I got it right.
Yeah.
On the motion, Ms. Oden?
No.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms., Ms. Hohency?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries one, two, three, four, five to four.
Oh. Wow.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is Board of Education software called E-Board by Mr. Kaufman. I feel like this ought to go to Budget Committee, Mr. Kaufman.
Happy to discuss it in committee.
Okay. So do we have consensus to send this on to Budget Committee? Anyone object to that?
Budget or Finance?
Finance?
Oh, excuse me. Finance and Operations Committee.
Thank you.
I apologize. Do we have consensus to send this to Finance?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
No.
No.
It's her committee.
No. I don't want it.
Do we need to take a vote?
We need to take a vote or discuss it.
Policy requires a vote.
Take a vote.
You have to have a vote even for consensus, seeing where Mr. Mosher is on the phone.
I'm going to make a motion, and I know it's irregular, but I'm going to do it anyways, to send this to the Finance and Operations Committee.
Second. No, I think Operations. It's more of Operations, I think.
Did I misspeak again?
No.
No.
It's just a side question.
Okay.
If curriculum would be more appropriate, but they confirm that finance would be better.
What's the Operations part?
No, I believe this is a...
Okay.
Board of Ed, okay.
Board of Ed.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Oden.
I'm going to vote against it because I think it's a board issue rather than just a committee issue, and I think it's informational only. So I would say the board should weigh in on it as a board.
Okay. Mr. Guarino.
I'd like to table this motion.
Okay. Is there a second for table?
I'll second it.
On the motion to table?
I believe if we table, we need a time for it to return.
Mm-hmm.
If you don't, you don't...
Just sits out there.
Sits out there. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Are you ready for the vote?
Sure.
On the motion, on, to table the motion, Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five yeses, four noes. Motion is tabled.
Moving on. I have an item. Dr. Mosley has asked me to query the board about whether or not we are willing to cancel our February 25th meeting that's currently scheduled. We will not have any members of administration available to come to the meeting, to answer questions, to do any of that sort of work on that particular day. I have worked with Tara to look at alternate days, and there is not an alternate day that week that would work, and then we have a meeting two weeks after that. So...
If I could just speak to that?
Sure.
Just really quickly, I know that there are some administrators that reached out to me and said that they wanted to take that week for vacation, and it's usually the best time because school is not in session as opposed to doing it when school is in session. So what I just proposed and put out there is that I know that there's going to be about two to three people who might not be here, including myself, but I don't necessarily think we're all not going to be here. But I wanted to just kind of alert the board that we would not be, there'll be, there probably will be some people missing. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Van Twyver.
This is school vacation?
Yes, school vacation week.
Well, that was a problem scheduling then.
Yes, unfortunately, the Monday before is President's Day, and then the next meeting is in March. Okay.
Is there a motion?
I guess there has to be a motion, doesn't there?
And then we can discuss it once...
I have, I moved to cancel the February 25th meeting.
Second.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Kaufman and then Ms. Van Twyver. Oh, no, you're not. Okay, just Mr. Kaufman then.
Yeah, I think we ought to meet. I think we need to maintain consistency. We published a schedule saying we were going to meet. Originally, the board met every two weeks. The board changed that to be the first, I'm sorry, the second and the last Monday of each month, which cuts out several meetings over the course of the year. Is that you poll the board to see who's available, since it's a previously scheduled meeting? While it's unfortunate that we may have some members of the administration not here, it's a board meeting. The board has business. We're going to have committee meetings. There'll be recommendations from those committees. I think we should continue our business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Uh, yes, Mr. Kaufman. Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I have no problem canceling this meeting. I think that this board, members of the board, need to be wary that when they come to the, to our meetings, that their questions and their comments should be brief and succinct and respectful, that other people on the board need to have time to speak also. This, this board should not be dominated by one or two people who speak for the most time and, and, and speak the most times and for the most times. We are nine people here, and we meet twice a month. We meet, I think, double, probably triple the, the number of required times per year that, that we're supposed to meet under, under state law. We could actually meet once a month, if we, if we really needed to. But I, I have no problem canceling this meeting, and I think we can get everything done, you know, the following meeting, two meetings in March.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Timmons, I'm sorry, Ms. Porter?
This extends beyond just members of the board and the administration. The whole school department is on vacation. We have people who watch at home. We have people who attend our meetings, who will be on school vacation that week. So I think it is appropriate to cancel.
Thank you. Ms. Hohensie?
Thank you. I'm just rather curious. We're not canceling the budget meeting this week, and three members can't readjust their schedule in two days to make it, and yet, I mean, but this other meeting that probably most of the board could make, we're canceling. So I mean, isn't there some consistency? If, say, two or three administrators can't make it, we're going to cancel the 25th, why don't we find a budget meeting that the board can make?
Yes, Mr. Guarino.
Thank you, Madam President. Budget meeting is different, because we're on a budget season. We're on a tight schedule. So we have to get our budget to the alderman. So it's a different, you're, you're not comparing apples to apples. It's apples to oranges. So that's a different story. So I, I think it's not a, it's, it's not a fair comparison.
Okay. Uh, let's move, let's move forward then. Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mosher, did you have something to say before we vote?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm in favor of canceling the meeting, because I understand we're going to have a foot of snow on the day.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Ms. Oden?
Uh, I believe the state RSA states that a Board of Education has to meet at least once every two months. So I think we're certainly are, are meeting that. And if we're not going to have our administrators here to answer questions, I don't see a problem at all canceling the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready for the vote?
Yes, please.
On the motion to cancel the February 25th meeting, Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to two.
Okay, thank you. The next item on, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, before we break to go to non-public, I have an urgent new business item I'd like to bring forward to the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino also informed me that he has a, a new business item that is time-sensitive. So I was going to say, before we take a non-public, could we take things out of order, please? Do the new business items that you two have, ask for public comments, I would even entertain board comments at this point, and then take the non-public, so we can go home? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All right, so let's do that. Let's, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino had...
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, I was going to do the two new business and then public comments, in case the public would like to comment on those two new business items. So, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to put a question before this board regarding pending legislation in Concord. This legislation has to do with local control. That is returning local control to school boards regarding weapons prohibition. This week in Concord, they're having hearings on, on that legislation. So I would move to have the board president send a letter on behalf of this board to our state representatives advising them that it is the wish of the National School District that they vote yes on HB 101, allowing local school districts to adopt policies regulating firearms in their jurisdictions.
Second. Okay. Uh, Mr. Kaufman?
Move to table this discussion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. On the question of tabling?
On the question of tabling, Mrs. Oden?
No.
Uh, Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to two.
Okay, thank you. The next item on, I'm sorry, Mr. Kaufman?
Yes, before we break to go to non-public, I have an urgent new business item I'd like to bring forward to the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino also informed me that he has a, a new business item that is time-sensitive. So I was going to say, before we take a non-public, could we take things out of order, please? Do the new business items that you two have, ask for public comments, I would even entertain board comments at this point, and then take the non-public, so we can go home? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay. All right, so let's do that. Let's, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Guarino had...
Thank you, Madam President.
Oh, I was going to do the two new business and then public comments, in case the public would like to comment on those two new business items. So, Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to put a question before this board regarding pending legislation in Concord. This legislation has to do with local control. That is returning local control to school boards regarding weapons prohibition. This week in Concord, they're having hearings on, on that legislation. So I would move to have the board president send a letter on behalf of this board to our state representatives advising them that it is the wish of the National School District that they vote yes on HB 101, allowing local school districts to adopt policies regulating firearms in their jurisdictions. This week in Concord, they're having hearings on, on that legislation. So I would move to have the board president send a letter on behalf of this board to our state representatives advising them that it is the wish of the National School District that they vote yes on HB 101, allowing local school districts to adopt policies regulating firearms in their jurisdictions. Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Kaufman?
Move to table this discussion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. On the question of tabling?
On the question of tabling, Mrs. Oden?
No.
Uh, Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes no. Ms. Hohensie?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
No.
Ms. Porter?
No.
The table fails, five to four.
Okay.
I would like, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, certainly. Ms. Van Twyver?
This is discussion on the main...
On the main motion, yes.
Um, it's getting late. I have trouble pushing the button. Um, this is quite a controversial subject, and I think that trying to come up with a consensus on this subject tonight would be difficult. So I'm going to vote against doing this tonight. I voted to table it, because I think we should have a, a longer discussion on, on this. After everybody's reviewed the legislation and had some time to think about it, we've best, in our, in our best interest to take it up at another time.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Hohensie had her hand up.
I, I agree with Ms. Van Twyver. It wasn't in our packet. We didn't have the bill in front of us. Everybody is available to, I mean, they can write to their legislators. The hearing, I believe, is on the 13th, which is Wednesday. Um, I believe it's even nine o'clock in the morning, but I don't feel comfortable having one letter represent nine diverse opinions. I don't think that we're unanimous in this. And is my duration on the board, I don't remember that we really got behind a lot of legislation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. This legislation will simply allow us to return our, our policy, which we changed last year, back to the way it was. That's all it's going to do. So we were fine with local control and, and not allowing guns in schools, except under certain circumstances with police officers, or whether it's training students. And all we're going to do is just return our, our policy, our school board policy, which does not allow guns on our, on our school, in our schools or on our school grounds. And so we were fine with it before, so basically not a big deal, not a big change. We're just going to go back to the way we were, which made a lot of sense, because having guns in schools makes no sense at all.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. I would share Ms. Van Twyver and Ms. Hohensie's opinion on this. It's a complex issue. Uh, the other side of that is, I think it's best left to the legislature to determine what the law is, and our job is to follow state law regulations, et cetera. To be in a position of making law locally, I think, would only get, end up in a lawsuit and bring more problems to the district than you may want to solve. I agree with Ms. Van Twyver about tabling. That's why I made the motion. It's complex. You're going to have a lot of opinion. We can't decide that now. You'd be here all night. It'll take all night to have a discussion on this. I'm not going to do that.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Timmons?
Yes, um, we won't have to if we take that vote. And I think we should go ahead and take the vote, and we won't have the discussion, because then the vote will tell us what we need to do and what we need not to do. We got the, the letter in the mail telling us this, I think it's House Bill 101. It's in, it's up for review on Wednesday. They had the chance to review it, and I think that it's important that we put things back the way it was, and I think we should vote on it tonight. So the motion was on the floor to bring it forward, and I second it. I want to bring that forward. I want to vote on that tonight.
I, I'm against it.
Okay.
Uh, I have my comments on that. And that is that the state law trumps whatever policies we may put up. And I think it would be useless to, to, to second-guess the legislature, because whatever they're going to do, that's what we're going to have to do. And policies, I know. So what are we going to vote for? Send a letter that we support it? Nah, stay out of it. It's none of our business. As it is.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Mosher.
The legislature will take care of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mosher.
We got 400 people up there to, to vote against. Leave it alone.
Okay.
They'll take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I will point out that there is precedent for this type of action by a school board. Um, school boards across the state have written to the state reps, letting them know. Chester, for example, has sent a, a letter from their board supporting the measure. I can only assume that if a school board felt that they were against it, that they could do that as well. But I'll, I'll take one more from each, and then I would like to keep going.
Thank you. I think that if we were going to vote on it, we should have revised our agenda, put it on the agenda, so people could speak. There were people that came earlier that thought if there was public comment, they were going to weigh in. They didn't want to bring this up and cause any acrimony. So I, I don't think it's fair to the public that did want to speak to, to do this by, I don't want to say the word stealth, but it, it's not, it's not out, out in the open.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kaufman?
And I would think the board would want to approve the language of the letter, and that is not presented to us. Had it been on the agenda, had a letter been circulated, then we'd be in a different position. But right now, the letter you're asking the board to approve has not been written yet, and I find that unacceptable.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I, I'm intrigued, because I believe we've had this question discussed about bringing stuff up during new business at the meeting, and individuals were on opposite sides of the issue the last time this came up, where I was saying, hey, let's not do that, because people don't have a chance to weigh in, and other people were telling me that they had the absolute right to do it. So, you know, this is why I, I pointed that out. It's uncomfortable for everyone. So, Mr. Guarino, have you spoken twice on this?
I have.
Okay, then, at this point, I'd like to move forward.
Okay, so are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion, so everybody understands the motion, it's to have the board president send a letter on behalf of the board to our state representatives advising them that it is the wish of the National School District that they vote yes on HB 101, allowing local school districts to adopt policies regulating firearms in their jurisdictions. Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
I just think in fairness to whatever the vote may be, that should be reflected in whatever -- if it passes, that should be reflected in the letter.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
I think that's reasonable. I'm going to pass it this time.
Okay. Are you ready for the vote, Madam President?
Ms. Oden said?
Ms. Oden?
Said yes.
Yes.
I'd like to pass it this time. I'd like to hear the will of the board.
Mr. Kaufman?
I just want to confirm. This is to send the letter?
Yes.
Yes.
No. Mr. Mosher?
No.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Well, I've put myself on the spot.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, all the money I make. Yes, I guess I'm willing to do it. Thank you.
Okay, so that's a yes vote. Motion passes five to four.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Kaufman, you said you had an urgent matter. Is it for public or non-public?
No, totally public.
Okay.
So, I move to suspend the rules to bring forth an urgent matter to the board, namely the consideration and acceptance of the school building security upgrades and their reimbursement. If I can get a second, I'd like to speak.
Second.
Thank you. This is an urgent matter that has not come before the board as an agenda item, therefore has never been discussed by the board, nor has it been voted upon. This matter came to our attention in an email from Ms. Kinsella when she requested the board members sign a certification statement that certain security upgrades were performed at several of our schools. In my opinion, the board cannot just sign a certification statement. We need to receive the evidence presented as part of our packet, have the topic placed on an agenda for discussion, and then conduct a vote that takes specific action. None of those things have taken place. Hence, my concern at this time, recognizing the importance of the topic at hand, therefore my request to suspend the rules. With a vote to continue, I have prepared four motions that address the specifics of each school and would resolve certainly my concerns, and I believe any concerns the state might have over an authorized certification. And I won't go through the motions until that's accepted by the board to proceed.
Yeah, I see lots of hands. Ms. Oden, you were first, and then Dr. Mosley and Mr. Donovan, you can fight over it.
Thank you. We dealt with this at the Finance and Operations last committee meeting. On March 26, 2018, a motion was made. Mr. Guarino moved, seconded by Ms. Hohency, to approve receipt of the Public School Infrastructure Grant in the total amount of $399,034.79 with the stipulation that some of the grants remain pending at the state level. It was voted on unanimously by roll call. If we have members that want to put $400,000 at risk for some obscure reason when we've already voted on this, it's beyond me, and I don't think we're being fair to our students. I don't think we're being fair to our citizens, and I think it's just taking up time of this board when we have more important things to deal with. I won't support this.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to interject a little bit and just give some clarity. My Ministry of Assistance, Ms. Kinsella, has approached the board member that broached us several times, and unfortunately, the board member has decided not to sign or be involved in it. I want to be very clear that if there's any -- there is no blame here, but certainly Ms. Kinsella has acted on my direction, and if in any way, there should be no blame directed to her, but certainly to me. It's very unfortunate that this has come up in this manner. I concur with Ms. Oden, and I would appreciate if the board members not used the Ministry of Assistance in this manner. They work under direction from me. If there's any blame or anything, that's directed solely to the superintendent. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan, and then we'll go back.
Yes, just, I mean, I couldn't disagree with the maker of this motion more. We couldn't have been more transparent. We brought this up. We discussed the process. We proved everything, grant by grant. This, I don't understand. We -- I have -- we brought it forward at the Finance and Ops with the copies of all the motions, the discussions, I believe. If the maker of this motion went back and read the minutes, he would even notice that it said in there, well, we should hurry up and approve these so we can get reimbursed. This -- why this is even brought up, I'm astounded. That's all I can say. And if we don't want to collect the money, then the 80 percent the state is going to pay us, and there's a time limit to this. All nine don't sign, we don't get the money. Then I would suggest we ask Mr. Kaufman for the 80 percent.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
They voted on it.
Okay. I'd just like to -- one moment, please. I would -- I'd like to point out that at the Finance and Operations meeting, I did go. I did agree at that meeting to seek the advice of counsel. Last week, I had a problem where my email wasn't sending. I have resolved it. I spoke with him Friday. He was going to look into this and get back to me. I did not -- wasn't able to connect with him today. But I did agree to bring forward whatever he said. I gave him Mr. Kaufman's concerns and what Mr. Kaufman felt needed to happen as far as motions. I gave him the copy of the page where the last motion was, and then the other times that we've signed where I think we've all signed six of them, or I forget. How many did we sign, Mr. Donovan?
Signed 13 already.
We signed 13 of them already, all nine of us. So, I'm waiting to hear from him what his professional advice is on whether or not we have a legal obligation to make a new motion. So, Ms. Van Twyver?
So, Mr. Kaufman signed all the others except one?
He signed 13 of them, and there's three or four more, four more now, I believe, that he hasn't signed because this issue wasn't an issue for the first 13. It's suddenly an issue now.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Hohency?
Thank you. I also didn't sign. I'll tell you my reason. We were given an email from the superintendent's office, and I always, at that point, knew that I wasn't blaming Tara. And it was just that three hours before a board meeting, we're giving all this documentation that we're supposed -- multiple pages on each one that we're supposed to digest, come in, sign it. It's not on the agenda. We're not allowed to go into the buildings. We're not allowed to contact the principals. I thought, well, you know, let's -- and we're conducting a meeting by email. We're saying by email, the board needs to do this. The board needs to take action. All I want is to put it on the record, make it transparent that, okay, it's done. The board is aware of it. We weren't invited in to see it, but we're expected to sign it. But do something at a meeting instead of just having this meeting by email. That was the beginning and end of it.
Dr. Mosley, would it be possible to arrange a time when board members can go see the work at the various schools that we have left?
I would be more than willing to do that. In fact, I will clear my schedule tomorrow to make sure that the remaining board members have an opportunity to tour and do whatever it needs to do to get these documents signed. No problem.
In the snow?
It's actually in the morning. It's not supposed to snow. It's supposed to snow in the afternoon.
Okay. Will that resolve your conflict, Ms. Hohency?
I would just -- discussing this at a board is halfway resolved because I just didn't want it not to come to the public attention. That was it. We're not supposed to conduct email business, and that was email business. If we could discuss it at the meeting saying they're ready, we've approved this before, then put them out there, sign, that's fine. I'm all for transparency. It is now transparent.
Okay. And for the record, there are photographs attached to the signature pages that we all look at. Mr. Kaufman and then Mr. Guarino, and then let's wrap it up.
Acceptance in March cannot demonstrate the photos that are taken in October or November when those photos were taken, when those invoices are issued. So, the invoices are dated anywhere from June until November. How can somebody in a March meeting say that that has occurred? You can't. And the photos have dates when they were taken. They are after the March meeting. You need to -- I'm trying to close this out so it's clear that the board took specific action. I'm not trying to hinder. I am trying to make the process clean, and I'll be happy to contact the state. And in fact, you know what? I have a suggestion. Let the board vote. You don't want to vote? Don't vote. But if you send those things in, fine. Include the transcript of this meeting, and I'll be fine. That's all.
Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that every taxpayer, every resident, every parent, every person sitting in the audience should be watching this right now because you should be outraged at this kind of behavior. It is obstructing reimbursement of dollars to our school district, and this whole board agreed unanimously. Mr. Donovan had explained that. We were all at that meeting. Ms. Oden had the -- she had the motion to which we all agreed upon. That is transparent. It's in the public. This is an abuse of power of elected official. This is obstructionism, and it is -- when people are elected to this board, they're supposed to serve the district, okay? This is an abuse of an elected position, what you're witnessing right now.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I'm going to remind everybody that we aren't going to be speaking disparagingly about each other. That's against our board policies. Moving on, I will alert the board when I hear back from Attorney Clausen with whatever his legal advice is. Ms. Oden?
Sorry. I just want to remind people, as a board, we work as a majority. Individuals do not demand certain things be done. We take a vote. Majority rules. I see that we've gone past the second 30-minute extension, and I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I'd like to remind everybody that the motion that actually passed was to complete our work, and I had said publicly that I would allow for public comments and board member comments if we did that. Oh, we can't discuss a motion to adjourn. I apologize.
Point of order. You have to have a two-thirds majority to change the rules. Ms. Oden still has privileges under Robert's rules to adjourn the meeting and second it. In order to change rules, you need two-thirds.
Yes, I know. I just said that. It wasn't debatable. I apologized. So, we should go ahead and vote on adjournment.
Yes. Okay. On the motion to adjourn?
Point of order. Can I have a question? Are we going to go into non-public, or is that canceled too?
If she makes a motion to adjourn and it's seconded, we vote on adjourning.
Okay. Just one clarification. Thank you very much.
And public comment would not be preferred.
Yes. Everything ends now, and again, we're not supposed to discuss it, and I apologize.
Okay. On the motion to adjourn?
Can't.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
No.
Mr. Kaufman?
No.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver?
No.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Hohency?
No.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Ms. Porter?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five yeses, four nos. The meeting is adjourned.
At 10:30.
10:30.